If we can switch on the webcast please.
Right, good afternoon everyone and welcome to this meeting of City Plans Panel. My name is councillor Jules Heselwood and I will be chairing today's meeting. Can I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without the need to be present. Can I also remind members of the public present that this is a formal meeting and whilst we welcome attendance, we ask that the proceedings are observed quietly and without interruption. Participants in the meeting are asked to remain courteous and respectful manner in asking questions or making comments. City Plans Panel deals with applications from the city centre as well as the largest and most significant applications the council receive. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicants, registered speakers and council officers to help members of the panel make their decision. Lots of information has been received by panel members from various sources prior to this meeting. Everything that has been received has been sent to officers and is included in the report. Anything that has been submitted since the report was produced will be updated today by officers. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you've introduced yourself. So can we start on my left please, Daljit?
Good afternoon, members. I'm Daljit Singh. I lead the city centre planning team.
Good afternoon, Andrew Perkins. I'm a planning officer in the city centre team.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Brannan, Principal Engineer, Highways.
Afternoon, Simon Cleo, the Environmental Health.
Hello, everyone. Councillor Asgar Khan, councillor for Bermatot and Richmond Hill Ward.
Hello, everyone. Councillor Annie Maloney, Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Right, good. These are weird. Councillor Kayleigh Brooks, Little London and Woodhouse Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Katie Dyke, London Beck and Seacroft Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Peter Carlisle, Carvelin and Farsley Ward.
Good afternoon, Lewis Footit, part of the Plans Panel Admin Team.
Good afternoon, Phil Ward, team leader, Landscape Heritage and Ecology.
Hello, everyone. I'm councillor Colin Campbell.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Dankin from the All Woodley Ward and can I welcome you, Chair to your first meeting, chairing this committee.
Good afternoon, councillor Barry Anderson, Adlington Wharfdale Ward.
Good afternoon, Stephen Varley, Design Officer.
Good afternoon, Andy Bowles, Clerk to the Panel.
Good afternoon, Amy Davis, Legal Advisor.
Good afternoon, David Feeney, Chief Planning Officer for Leeds.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you for your kind words welcoming me to my first meeting. Councillor Cohen, you have a question?
Yeah, are we properly livestreaming? Because normally, as we're going through, it shoots to us all on the screen and I'd noticed it didn't. I only noticed it didn't.
I can explain, yeah. It's just how it works now in this room. Don't worry, if you're watching the livestream, it works as it used to do. You'd have the cameras. It's just in this room, it's just a PowerPoint now only.
Don't worry, you are going out livestream, councillor Cohen. It's the new technology. Okay, so we are going out livestream, that's all fine. So moving to the agenda then, can we take item number one?
Thank you, Chair. Under Agenda Item Number One, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under Item Number Two, there's no exempt information on today's agenda. Under Item Number Three, there are no late items. There has been some supplementary information submitted for Agenda Item Seven and this was published and distributed prior to the meeting. Under Agenda Item Number Four, can I ask members if they've got any interest to declare?
Councillor Khan.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say that I have visited the MAP charity a number of occasions, but however, I do not have any interest to declare and this afternoon I have come with open-minded to consider the application in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving under Agenda Item Number Five, we've had no apologies for absence today. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, item number six then, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 16th of May, seems quite a long time since we were last here in this room. So I will go through the minutes page by page for accuracy and then I will take matters arising, okay? So in your pack, the first page of the minutes is on page seven, so page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14 and page 15. As nobody has raised any issues, can I take those as a true and correct record of that meeting? Thank you councillor Cohen, yeah. And secondly councillor Dyke, thank you. And any matters arising from those minutes? No, okay, thank you, panel. So, moving on to Agenda Item Seven then, the application of 71 to 73 Mabgate. So to start, can I ask Andrew, our planning officer, to make your presentation report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to reserve matters for appearance, oh, sorry, for appearance, landscaping, layout, scale and access, which also follows on from a hybrid planning permission which was approved in October of last year. This was also subject to maximum parameter plans and a detailed design code and just to let members know, there's some slides that have been changed and revised as part of this pack, so it may be slightly different to the pack that was put on our website earlier this week, last week. So these reserve matters are working to the principles established by the hybrid planning permission but with some design refinement to ensure compliance with other regulatory bodies which have been regularised via non-material amendment applications. Within Mabgate, which is located to the east of the city centre boundary, which runs along Regent Street, which is here, if you can see, and it's within the conservation appraisal of Mabgate, it highlights the application site, which are the three buildings outlined in brown here, as having a detrimental impact upon the current conservation area. So the application site is outlined in red and located to the west of Mabgate and to the north of Hope House and the entrance range to Hope Foundry, which are both Grade Two listed. The existing buildings on site are of low scale and consist of three former industrial warehouse buildings. This slide is just to provide some various views around the site. So image one is taken from Mabgate looking north and you can see Hope Foundry here to the left-hand side and the application site is just in the background here. Image two is taken from Mabgate looking south and the application site is here. Image three is taken from Millwright Street looking south and the development site, you can just see behind those trees there. And image four is taken from Millwright Street and the development is to the left of Lady Beck here. And image five is taken from the courtyard of Hope Foundry and the development site is here. So as noted, the hybrid planning permission was controlled by a set of parameters relating to the maximum building footprint and building heights and the maximum quantum of development. The development is also subject to an approved design code which provides the details, frameworks on the proposed building's articulation, roof scape and materiality, as well as a landscape design strategy to ensure that any emerging development was of high quality and would form a positive contribution to this area of Mabgate. And the next few slides just highlight the maximum parameters which were secured at hybrid stage. So the proposed massing of the development was extensively tested through pre-application consultation prior to submission of the hybrid application and this included analysis of key views and it was concluded that the proposals would not overdominate Hope House or nearby non-designated heritage assets. And subsequently, this informed the building height parameters as highlighted on this slide, which the massing steps down towards the adjacent heritage assets of Hope Foundry. So it's approximately 9.4 metres at the height against Hope Foundry, which is, and there's also 25 metres against Hope Foundry boundary, which is this building, and then this rises to 33 metres, which is 10 storeys to this block which is set further away from the heritage assets. And as part of the hybrid planning permission, a site access parameters plans was also secured, which included vehicular access from Mabgate and a pedestrian access route from points A and B here, which would be time restricted to match the route secured in the consented development to the north, which is just off-screen here. And this would provide a route for pedestrians and cyclists through the development site to the adjacent roads of Skinner Lane and Millwright Street. Just before we move on to the details of the proposal, I just wanted to mention that since the report was printed, we have received a further five letters of objection, one of which is signed by 37 businesses, and a letter which consisted of various comments and a petition which was submitted by MAP charity with approximately 240 names on. In these comments, the addresses have not been validated and these comments have not raised any new material considerations and therefore all matters raised are already outlined in the report in front of you. There is one non-material matter that was raised in these comments which relates to the council funding MAP, but as this is not material, is not relevant for members' consideration today. In addition, we have also received a letter from Alex Sobel MP who raises concerns regarding introduction of the Winter Gardens, agent of change principle within the MPPF. A deed of easement should be signed and for a general discussion regarding development upon music venues with executive members. The matters raised are already addressed in the report and the last comment will be passed to executive members. We've also received comments from Hillary Benn MP who raises comments from his constituents regarding the development and the potential impact on the ongoing operation of MAP and their events. He requests that these matters are brought to the attention of Plans Panel today. Oh, I'll just go back to this, sorry. The reserve matters would feature 302 built-to-rent apartments ranging from one to three bedrooms and also 20% affordable housing on-site at 80% at local market rents. The development would also feature new public green space and active ground floor frontages along Mabgate. So this slide will just highlight the ongoing regeneration which has already taken place to this area of Mabgate. The site is outlined in red, as you can see, and to the north, Millwright Street development, which has consent for a student development, which is this development site. And then to the east and across from Mabgate is the Leeds College site, which has consent for a mixed use of educational and residential uses and Phase One is currently on-site at the minute. And then to the west of the site is Byron Street Mills, which has consent for a residential change of use with mixed use commercial at ground floor. And then in addition to the ongoing regeneration of the area, there's also a number of residential uses which already exist and surround the site. Alex House is here, which is residential. To the east of the site, and there's Matensia House here, which is to the west of the site and the former Black Horse Pub, which is here, you can see, that's also residential. And then in addition to the south of Hope Foundry, just slightly off this image, is Leyland's House and Mabgate House, which are both residential apartment blocks. So full consideration of all technical and environmental matters was undertaken as part of the determination of the hybrid planning permission and this consisted of a noise survey during one of MAPS Charity Club Night's events to determine if suitable noise levels could be achieved in the residential parts of the development and without prejudice in ongoing uses of MAP. A method statement was agreed between the applicants, the council and MAP prior to the survey taking place to ensure all parties were agreeable with the proposed methodology. And it is also worth mentioning that MAP do have a planning application under consideration at present, which is to create more uses of the car park via introduction of a mezzanine structure. Further information from MAP has also been requested on the likely uses of this space and the hours of intended use and which this application would need to take into account the existing and evolving mixed use character to this area of Mabgate. So the results were reported in an updated noise impact assessment as part of the hybrid application, which demonstrated that MAP activities could continue to operate in their current form whilst retaining suitable internal acoustic amenity within the development site. And this was subject to adopting the following mitigation measures. Winter gardens to the southern facade of Building B, which this slide just highlights, and how any noise intrusion would be reduced by the inclusion of these winter gardens. No overglazing or ducted ventilation to the apartments facing the courtyard are proposed except windows which will serve common corridor areas to the apartment blocks. These images just provide an idea of the view which would be provided from the winter gardens, which have been designed to direct views upwards and outwards from the main living areas rather than downwards into the current car park below. In addition to the noise conditions secured on the hybrid planning permission, another two conditions would be attached to this reserve matters, which requires details of a welcome pack, which will alert residents to the mixed use character of Mabgate and neighbouring users and also how residents of the apartments would benefit, how to operate the winter gardens. Another condition would also secure that validation testing is carried out to these apartments which face towards the courtyard of Hope Foundry to ensure that noise levels as demonstrated in the survey carried out at the hybrid planning permission stage are the ones achieved. And then in addition, the development, as mentioned, is built to rent, which will formally be managed by the applicant, who would also be able to manage any matters arising and with the inclusion of the handbook. And anyone renting the apartments would be fully aware of the existing mixed use character and nature of neighbouring users. Another key consideration in the determination of the hybrid planning permission and the parameters planned was the relationship of the development with Hope Foundry, of which at closest, a distance of 5.8 metres would be retained to an area which features no residential windows and then this extends to a distance of 21 metres and the edge of the closest residential window would retain around 7.7 metres to the elevation of Hope Foundry. And this slide will just show, just shows the section elevation of the relationship of this and this is taken at the closest point, which as mentioned, then extends to 21 metres. These distances were considered comparable with the surrounding character of Mabgate, which is derived from buildings located in close proximity to each other and where an element of overlooking of neighbouring land uses already takes place. Image one is Millwright Street, which is residential uses and that's a distance of 8.2 metres. The second image is the Leyland's House development to existing commercial uses, which is 6.3 metres. Image three is Leyland's House to Mabgate House, which is 13 metres. And image four is existing commercial and residential uses along Mabgate, which retains a distance of 11.4 metres. So in terms of the relationship of the development to MAP and to Hope Foundry, officers were content with that relationship. So given the existing urban grain, the distances proposed within the development and to neighbouring uses, these were considered contextual to this established character of Mabgate. And this slide just highlights some of the distances, some of the key distances around the development and also within the development site. These next few slides will just show the floor plans of the building. The ground floor area of the building will feature cycle parking, which is the brown area here and here. There's also car parking of 17 car parking spaces and there's also residence communal space which will be fronting towards Mabgate and also the yard area, which is one of the public spaces. In addition, there'll also be a commercial use proposed which will front towards Mabgate, creating an active frontage. This is just a typical upper floor of the development, which shows how the development would be laid out. This is an indicative layout of the apartments, which all meet minimum space standards and range from one to three-bedroomed units. And this also highlights how the winter gardens would be operated, so the main living is within here and then the winter garden balcony is here, which is then internally closed, the glazing against here. The next few slides are just showing the intended residence amenity space, which will feature various lounge spaces as well as co-working, a fitness suite and these amenity spaces will also feature, as mentioned, active frontages towards the public landscaped courtyard within the development. The next few slides are just showing the intended residence amenity space, which will feature, as mentioned, a cinema room, lounge, the main entrance and also a fitness and wellbeing suite. And this is also just showing some of the design intent for these communal spaces. So the next few slides are just to give members an idea of the elevation treatment of the buildings, which will follow, which follow the design code which was approved as part of the hybrid planning permission. The building materials will consist of two types of red brick, banding detail, soldier course detailing, as well as a sawtooth brickwork and glazed brick to respect the existing character of this, sorry, respect the existing historical character of Mabgate. So the buildings facing Mabgate, this is Building A, would be a brick mill block connected by recessed link elements and the ground floor would feature active uses with glazed bricks above the windows and recessed stall rises. This is another elevation of Building A, which faces towards the external amenity space. And these are the other elevations of Building A, which show the brickwork, which will be carried out, as well as incorporating the glazed brick within the main pedestrian route through the site, which will link into those two landscape spaces. So Building B would provide the enclosure to the courtyard and feature a variety of materials in the form of projecting metal window frames and sawtooth brick detailing as well as piers. The top floor of the building would feature metal cladding set in from the brickwork and the ground floor would feature recessed colonnades. This is just another elevation of Building B, which faces towards the Lady Beck culvert. The other elevations of Building B, which again demonstrates how the brickwork detailing will be carried out. These elevations of Building B, which face towards Hope Foundry and the courtyard car park space of MAP. This elevation is Building C, which will continue the block-like aesthetics with interests created through brickwork detailing and the soldier course above windows in contrasting brick. Vehicular access point will be here, which will lead into the car park. These are just some more elevations of Building C, which will feature Juliet balconies facing towards the landscape space. In addition and add into the creative character of Mabgate, artwork would also be incorporated into the courtyard, which will draw people into the space and onward along the Lady Beck and into the neighbouring Millwright Street development. And these other elevations of Building C, which again demonstrates how the brickwork detailing would be carried out. The materials would take strong influence from the surrounding character and conservation area and I believe the applicants may have brought a sample in if members wanted to view the materials now at the end. Which do you think? Yeah, that's fine, yeah. So I'll just move on to the following slides, which are just the CGI's of the building. So these are taken from various viewpoints and this is taken from Mabgate looking north and you can see Hope Foundry in the foreground and then the development site is in the back. This is Leeds City College site, which has consent and as you can tell, it follows the character that's already established along Mabgate, where buildings are set to the back edge of the footpath. This is another slide looking south, which highlights the existing character of Mabgate in which buildings are set to the back edge and the development in the background and to the left is the Leeds City College site, which is this one. which is this one. So this view is taken adjacent to Hope Foundry, which you can see the single-story link, which then steps up towards the development. And this also highlights the proposed ceramic glazed tile, glazed bricks, which will be above the ground floor frontage and the envisaged finish of material, and also the deep brick reveals. This CGI just gives a view of the pedestrian route and greater look at the brick details, and also the ground floor frontages, including the ceramic brick tile, brick tiles that are proposed, which will be a nod to the existing character, the historical character of Mabgate. And then just turn into landscape. The landscape master plan follows the principles agreed through the design code with twin spaces used for residents and the public, which will also provide a public route through the development, which was secured as part of the hybrid planning permission, which will lead to Skinner Lane and Millwright Street. And this is also subject to the Millwright Street development coming forward. It's been consented but not yet implemented. There's also some tree planting proposed along Mabgate, just one here, and then some behind against Maten Shouse. And this is just due to the existing services that are in Mabgate. In addition, the development will also feature a residence roof space, roof terrace, which will be set in and will provide a shared space for residents to relax and socialise. The images to the right provide details of what public, of what the public amenity spaces are likely to feature. A 10% biodiversity net gain will be achieved on site, and the spaces will incorporate a range of measures, including planted rain gardens and also potentially blue roofs and a rainwater reel feature. The final details of all these will be secured as part of conditions attached to the hybrid planning permission. These are just some further CGI's of the envisaged landscape space, and this view is taken looking north through the yard and up towards the elevation of Building C, which you can see the proposed mural, which will also be subject to a separate condition regarding the details to be submitted before that's built or laid out. This is just another view of the yard and the route from the map, from yard to the Mabgate, to Mabgate, sorry. This is another CGI of the view of the garden area, which will feature a variety of plants, seating, and also informal areas of play. And then just to provide a verbal update on a few, a few points which were not noted in the officer reports. In addition to the representations received in paragraph 25 of the report, MAP also raised comments that windows facing their courtyard should not be openable, and that sound mitigation should be installed at the source. However, for the reasons noted in the report, we consider these measures are not necessary. In terms of flood risk, the exception test and following on from paras 151 and to 154 in the report. And as part of the hybrid planning permission, it was demonstrated that the development would provide a wide range of social, economic and cultural benefits, which were considered to outweigh the flood risk, and that the development would be safe for its lifetime, taking in account the vulnerability of its users, without increasing flood risk elsewhere, and where possible would also reduce the overall risk of flood risk. And therefore, the exception test was passed. And then lastly, original comments received from EDG Design Officers dated July of this year raise some concerns over the scale and massing of the development, which have not been mentioned in the report. And as an update to members, I will hold, hold, hand over to design colleagues to provide their updated views in a moment, but just to summarise, officers consider that this development is a positive addition, which would regenerate a key brownfield site within Mabgate Conservation Area. The application follows the principles already established as part of the hybrid planning permission and the maximum parameters and design code. The scheme would deliver affordable housing on site and new public green space. The development has also balanced the needs of existing and prospective future occupants into a highly sustainable part of the city whilst not impacting on the ability of the current neighbouring users to continue their operations. Thank you.
Stephen, do you want to come in now? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just to confirm, there was an earlier comment about height. The development, I developed the thoughts on the issue and following discussions we had with heritage colleagues and planning colleagues. I can assure members that is not now my view. You know, that it was a much earlier thinking comment, you know. So, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Can I now invite Charlie Stobart to the table, who is speaking in objection to the application, please? Okay, one, oh, sorry, once you're ready, you will have four minutes to speak and make your case, and then the alarm will sound to signal that the four minutes is finished.
Okay, lovely, thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Charlie Stobart, co-founder and project director at MAP Charity. Some of you visited our home this morning at Hope Foundry. MAP Charity welcomes residential development in the area. Our future plans have an integral role in improving the sustainability of the area by engaging and enriching the local community, including the new residents, through our cultural activities. MAP Charity supports some of Leeds' most vulnerable young people to gain empowering qualifications to access professional pathways into creative industries. We are the only alternative provision delivering this service in Leeds. We work with schools across West Yorkshire to meet the needs of young people who would otherwise be considered neat. The balconies proposed on Block B overlook our education centre and are a safeguarding concern for our young people, some of whom are children looked after by the local authority. In 2019, we became proud custodians of the Grade Two listed Hope Foundry and its courtyard. We secured over a million pounds of public funding from LCC and the RDF, and last year we opened 10,000 square foot of workspaces for up to 30 charities and SMEs predominantly working in the creative industries. The proposals put the council's existing financial investment, our young people and MAP's creative ecosystem at risk, and could ultimately end our activities for good. Unlike most charities, MAP's operational costs have been largely self-funded by our in-house creative activities and programmes of events such as Cosmic Slop. Over the last 20 years, Cosmic Slop has become a cultural landmark for electronic music lovers from this city and beyond, with over 10,000 annual visitors. During each event, 200 people use our courtyard on site, directly under the proposed Block B winter gardens. All fundraising from these events enable the work that we do with, with young people. Tom Riordan commented, "MAP Charity are looking to provide a replicable model resolving the tension between regeneration and the support, retention and preservation of the existing strengths of an area and the community within it. It is an important project for our city. It is not just Tom who understands the value of our activities. In four weeks, over 4,000 people have signed the petition, showing their support, and over 160 letters have been sent to councillors. We urge the panel to listen to these people when considering the proposals today. We do not believe the applicant has appropriately applied the agent of change principle to ensure our existing activities will not be affected by their development. The report discounts the possibility of a deed of easement. The acoustic mitigations outlined in the application are inadequate, and we want to draw attention to the limited meaningful engagement with MAP Charity to date, as developers did not run any co-design workshops with us. We feel unheard and ignored as part of this process. For example, the site visit this morning was our first opportunity to welcome the principal planning officer inside Hope Foundry. We question the robustness of the support of the report, and there has been some criticism regarding the power of delegation so far. Block B's winter gardens are introduced as an acoustic design measure and fail to take place into consideration what future residents will be, fail to take into consideration that future residents will be able to open them and use them as living space. They will not suffice as appropriate acoustic barriers." The report highlights that Hope Foundry is the neighbour most closely affected by the proposal, separated only by 6.8 metres. Block B is just shy of 60 metres tall, and insufficient weight has been given to the impact of it on a heritage site. A balancing exercise should be done to assess the heritage harm versus public benefit. Noise complaints will end up in the licence, in the licensing committee, and if we lose the right to operate events, MAP will be unable to generate enough income to care for our heritage asset and deliver our education programme. Cultural institutions make areas like Mabgate an attractive place for public and private investment. We request the applicants engage with MAP Charity through co-design workshops to ensure that Block B does not put over a million pounds of public funding at risk. For absolute clarity, MAP Charity are not NIMBYs. We simply hope that together we can find a better solution to protect our service users, the local community and the council's investments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I just need to take a breath now, to get a lot in those four minutes.
It's okay. Can you just switch your microphone off a second? Thank you. If you can just stay where you are, I will just ask members of the panel if they have any questions for you. Okay. So, members, do you have any questions for Charlie?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Charlie, for the presentation. In your presentation, you have raised a number of concerns. My question is, what conversation or consultation have you had with the developer or this planning team?
They have been to visit us and to present similar designs to what you've been presented with today. We were led in those meetings to believe that the consent had already been given for balconies on that wall, the south-facing wall of Block B. And it wasn't a consultation, it was a presentation. There was some conversation, but the things that were raised on our side have not been addressed by any changes to their design.
councillor Day.
Hiya, thank you for your presentation. I want to ask you, if the design was, well, if the development was given approval, but you could comment on what design you would find acceptable, what changes would you like to see?
I would, I would like to see no balconies on the south-facing wall of Block B. For several reasons.
So can I, can I delve into that a little bit more? And then, would you, would you say no windows at all on that side?
We're not opposed to windows, per se, it's whether or not they're openable. I've got vulnerable young people there, 15 metres, I think you said, Andrew, in your, in your presentation. Literally door to wall between where our young people access our educate, that's their in, that's the door to inside, they do use that outside courtyard space as well. And we have 200 visitors on a weekly base, on a weekly basis, sometimes more than once a week, using that courtyard between 10pm and 4am as outside space for events, and we're extremely concerned about the potential for noise complaints and the impact of that on our future activities.
Okay, thank you. Can I, can I add another one, Chair? Is that okay? So, I've lost where I highlighted it. There was a comment in the papers about the courtyard. And, can't find it now, but it says something to do with the fact that the, the licensing conditions don't include use of the courtyard. If I could find it, it would help, I'd be able to tell you where it was.
I know what you're talking, I know the part you're talking about, if that helps.
Okay, well, I was just, I was just wondering, kind of exploring that a little bit, because it seems to me that it's impossible to put on a club night without the use of the courtyard. And is, is that something that you would look to extend?
So our events licence currently is for, is inside, and that's where the licensable activities take place. In order to access that inside space, the courtyard is needed to come in and go out, and indeed, if you needed some fresh air during one of those events, that's where you would be. We have used temporary events notices in the past when we have done licensable activities in the outside courtyard space, but they are temporary events notices currently, and we would be looking to extend those in the future. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Day. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, you briefly mentioned safeguarding concerns. Would you mind just expanding on those a little bit?
Yeah, so I am the designated safeguarding lead for MAP Charity, and we have up to 64 young people in a week come to us and use our education space, all of which are not accessing mainstream education for one reason or another, they've all got their own individual needs. And we are meeting the needs of those young people. As you can imagine, the nature of those young people, some have extreme adverse experiences or have had adverse experiences or continue to have. And the space that they occupy in our building is a safe space for them, and we have concerns about living spaces, i.e. the winter gardens, being, you know, residents being able to, being in very close proximity to that safe space. Yeah, that's, that's the safeguarding concern that we have.
Just a quick follow-up. How, how often are the young people using that space to be impacted?
They're there every day, every day, every, every, every term time day. And then in, we have extracurricular activities happening during school holidays and after, you know, outside of school hours. But the, those specific young, the cohort that I'm talking about and that we have worked with for 20 years in that space are there every day during term time.
Okay, any further questions to Charlie from panel members? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I now ask Tim Waring and Matt Floyd, the applicant's representatives, to come to the table, please? Okay, thank you. Once again, you will have four minutes, but that four minutes is between you, so however you want to split that four minutes is up to yourselves, but the buzzer will sound after the four minutes, and that's the indication that you need to stop. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and panel members. I'm Matt Floyd, Development Manager from Cheney Capital. Thank you for your time and consideration in the application before you. Just want to state, Cheney Capital Real Estate has funded, financed and developed real estate assets for over 16 years now. We pride ourselves on delivering good quality living and workspaces that embed themselves into the local community. Mabgate Yard is not only a significant investment for Cheney Capital, but we also believe a significant investment into Leeds City itself. Following an extensive design and procurement programme that we've undertaken over the last few months, and hopefully successful granting of the planning application here today, we're ready to commence the construction and deliver the much-needed homes within Mabgate Yard, Leeds City, and again, the wider new local government plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, panel. Your officers have given a very clear and thorough account of the proposals, I don't intend therefore to repeat those, but there are, got a few key observations I wanted just to pick up on. This is a key regeneration project, it'll further the transformation of Mabgate. It's an application for reserve matters that will conclude the planning process, enable 302 new homes to come forward. Matters explain that the intention is to develop this site this year or start the development. This will help meet the pressing need for housing in the city and provide built-to-rent and affordable rental properties. We'll be delivering these properties at an affordable housing policy compliant level, 20% of them will be for discount market rent. This is a real development that will actually happen in quick order. We've heard from MAP today some of their concerns, and whilst we have some sympathy with MAP, we do feel that we've worked very hard with officers to get to a scheme that is both compliant with policy and is appropriate for the location. It's not an opportunity to revisit the principles of the development, these were established at an outline stage, and that outline stage was a thorough approach to development in which we undertook a number and agreed to a number of mitigations. We've been in discussions with MAP over time, we've engaged with them pre the original hybrid application, we've engaged with them post the submission of that hybrid application, we've agreed with them the appropriate noise mitigation, well, sorry, not noise mitigation, noise survey work, we've then, pre the submission of this reserve matters, engaged with them, and subsequent to that also engaged with them. As a consequence, we believe them, we'd hope- As a consequence, we believe that we'd hoped we'd addressed any concerns they've had. It seems that their concerns are with the winter gardens, and those winter gardens suggested as being balconies and living spaces, they aren't living spaces, they are just simple internal balconies. The officers have worked with your officers, with your, sorry, we've worked with your officers and we've got a number of mitigations that we've introduced into this scheme that we feel now have been addressed the concerns raised by MAP. It should also be borne in mind that whilst this scheme has incorporated this mitigation, the MAP operation is strictly controlled by licence. The licence, it says, states that any music shall be played at a low level, that's given it's in a residential area, it shall only be permitted to operate within the building itself. There are very extensive controls on the external management of MAP, which you will be aware of perhaps through the licence, if you've seen that. And it requires them to be respectful of the existing residential communities, not necessarily this development, but those that were already in place before this scheme came before you. Also, it's interesting to note that there is no express consent for night-time events, planning consent itself. And whilst we don't disagree that ancillary uses there are appropriate, they are only ancillary to the real reason why that licence is in place. We therefore respectfully suggest...
I will need to stop you there, your time.
All right, that's right.
That was the buzzer, thank you. Okay, questions from panel members to the applicant representatives? councillor Brooks and councillor Day.
Thank you. The winter gardens, can you open them like a window?
Yes, you can. So they're only a sliding window type arrangement, so they're effectively, how to describe them, councillor Brooks, is an internal balcony which sits, and I don't know if we've got the image there, I think, Andrew, you're pulling that up, which shows how it operates. If, I think the one that's got the noise levels on is quite a useful one, the... Yeah, so this is a graphic representation, on the right-hand side you can see how they're laid out. And on the left-hand side you can see in section form, the apartment on the right-hand side in green, for which there'll then be sliding doors, bifolding doors, or I believe they're sliding. You then are able to walk into your winter garden, and then beyond that is a further window that then opens when you want to open it. So for the purpose of habitable rooms, where you live, you live in the green area, and the light green area is essentially an internal stroke external garden, which can be closed or open depending on the weather. It's interesting to note that in relation to the safeguarding issue, I note that MAP don't have a concern about overlooking, it's more about the issue about the winter garden, which I'm a little confused why that is unacceptable, because it can open a window, because they don't seem to be concerned about the prospect of people looking out of those properties.
Sorry, councillor Day, please.
Well, my comment was also about those windows, it's kind of similar to councillor Brooks, but I was wondering if it's possible for those external winter garden windows to be non-openable. I do think it makes a difference, it's slightly different to have somebody looking through a window and somebody being able to peer out and perhaps talk to the people below them. So is that not a possibility, that they don't open at all? I know they've got mechanical ventilation, haven't they?
The building, the apartments have a mechanical ventilation, I'm not sure about the winter gardens, if they've got mechanical ventilation, I looked to our noise adviser. So, yeah, sorry, I don't know if you heard that, but the mechanical ventilation is in the apartments itself and the winter gardens themselves aren't mechanically ventilated.
Can I just re-ask then, so is it possible that those external winter garden windows are built so that they cannot be opened?
I suppose physically it is possible, I don't understand why that might be necessary for the purposes. I appreciate the suggestion of somebody opening the window and shouting down, but is that a safeguarding issue? I mean, the purpose of those winter gardens is to provide the opportunity for effectively external space for the residents of those properties?
Yeah, councillor Day.
Okay, just come back with my final thing. I guess that's one issue. I stand by my point that I do think it makes a difference. If you're working in a courtyard and there are windows, the intrusion onto that courtyard is greater if somebody is leaning out of the window than if you can just see a face at the window. But there is an additional point about the potential for noise nuisance. If a resident were to open that window, then the noise surely will carry more into the apartment, that's obvious, but there's no danger of that if the window cannot be opened.
I don't believe that there's an issue with regard to noise that emanates from this property onto the adjoining properties, and that I don't believe is a planning consideration relevant to this planning application, but I'll be corrected if that is the case, the officers perhaps can perhaps comment on that. But it's the noise that would emanate from this property will not affect MAP's operations at all.
Sorry, can I come back on a very, very last thing? Just because you misunderstood me there. My first point was about people leaning out of the window and intruding on a courtyard with young people working in it, but my second point, perhaps I wasn't really clear, was about the noise from, let's say, an event at MAP going into the apartment, and if the window didn't open, then that's less, potentially less of an issue.
Yes, I think if we just go back to that image that shows the section through, and this deals with the noise issue, that the emanating noise from MAP that flows then through the property, if you are living in your apartment and MAP are having, you know, one of their late-night cosmic slop events, then clearly if you are concerned about that, you will be closing your winter garden window, you will have your winter garden window closed, as you will have your apartment window closed, and that effectively creates a vacuum between MAP and the habitable rooms. So actually you're getting there effectively a vacuum effect that will create a very strong mitigation from noise.
Okay, thank you. I'll let other people ask some questions, Chair.
Thank you councillor Day. councillor Cam.
Thank you. Just the question on the consultation, I know you briefly answered that you had the conversation with MAP Charity, and I'm sure you heard the concerns they've raised this afternoon, and they must have raised when they were having a conversation with yourselves. Was there any consideration given to the question previously asked by my two colleagues about the winter garden windows opening? And the other question was, just on the consultation, because where the development's taking place, it's not in my ward, Bermatofs and Richmond Hill, it's in Little London Woodhouse, but other side of the ward, either presenting the people of Bermatofs do live there, and it's going to have a massive impact on their immunity and the, on the area. Why wasn't we consulted, you know, as a councillors for the neighbouring ward? That's another question. Then I'll come back to the other question as well.
Yes, councillor Cam, just taking those in order, so the winter gardens and the discussion, so if we go back to, this was a planning, sorry, originally a planning application in hybrid that was promoted by HBD Developments, and that involved pre-application engagement with a range of bodies, and I do believe that Bermatofs were approached, both the community and local councillors as well. That was back in 2021 when the original planning application was made. There were a series, I think it was two or three, events that were held over screen because at the time we were in Covid lockdown. And those were invited, people were invited, the communities were invited, and MAP were invited. I can't recollect whether MAP actually attended the screen version, but then there were subsequent discussions directly between HBD and MAP, both prior to and post the submission of that hybrid planning application. When the hybrid planning application was made and MAP raised objections on noise issues, we then engaged, or the HBD engaged, forgive me because I wasn't at all of these meetings, but they engaged directly with MAP and with your environmental health officer, and the purpose of that meeting, or those meetings and discussions, was to determine the scope of the noise assessment, so that your environmental health team could be satisfied that we'd taken proper account of the MAP operation that was taking place within the building, the cosmic slop event as it's called, which is under licence permitted to take place within a very specific part of that building. The consequence of that was we agreed the methodology for the survey, and the survey was undertaken in accordance with that methodology. The outcome of that survey demonstrated that the impacts of cosmic slop on these residents through the agent of change wouldn't be of concern, and your environmental health officer confirmed that. And at that point, the environmental health officer accepted or didn't raise any objections, suggested some conditions. Also, at that time, there was a suggestion, there was a demonstration that there would be windows and overlooking or apertures in the wall that we're talking about at the moment. And we, I think showed at the time, winter gardens as a solution to mitigation. And I say I think, I've just looked and had it confirmed, they were suggested as a potential mitigation and accepted as a mitigation. So post that, we then made the reserve matters application, in advance of that, again, engagement between Cheney and MAP, and then post that, further discussions between Cheney and MAP. Matt, I don't know if Matt, if you want anything else to add on that?
Yeah, the one thing I do just want to say quickly, and I think it's centring around a theme of questions here, is on that permeability of the winter gardens and the openable windows that are there. You know, we are proposing here a build-to-rent development, residential development, and we are the long-term custodians of this building, we're not just developing it and moving on from site. So through a level of education of the residents coming in, through active management from our MAP onsite management team, through, you know, passive control of what the designs have been embedded into the scheme up until now, we believe that, you know, noise emanating from MAP, the levels at which we've taken to embed design solutions, we've even moved Block B further away from site boundary, and these are all careful considerations throughout our design process, which we did present to MAP, and we've been around their facility as well to just view and take on board concerns raised by them. That's all been undertaken since we've been involved on the design development of this reserve matters application from earlier this year.
Okay, thank you. councillor Campbell, next, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think you'll appreciate that what we're trying to do is to ensure that any issues are designed out of the building rather than designed into it. And I think it's fair to say that all members at some point or other have had complaints from residents about noise, so we realise that it's an issue, and I think we are keen to bottom this, for want of a better word, there are other issues with the development, but, so I suppose I'm asking the question. In effect, there will be a condition that basically says to you, you have to design it as per the drawing. I suppose I've got two questions. One is the notional figure of 76 decibels, are you regarding that as the maximum, or may there, would your design solution cope with a higher noise level should it occur on an odd occasion? And I suppose the second point is, given it will be a condition, I'm just interested to know how you will manage with residents a complaint which says, it's really noisy, I can't get to sleep. Will you, I suppose, as it's a condition, in effect it wouldn't be MAP's fault or the councils, it effectively would fall back on you because it would appear that the mitigation works were insufficient. So would you just like to talk us through, one, effectively what are you going to say to tenants, and two, how would you deal with a complaint?
Can I just, I'll deal with the first bit and perhaps pass over to Matt for the second bit. The first bit, I think, was in relation to the noise from MAP and the 76 dB, and whether that is reflective essentially of MAP's operations at its worst case, I think, is what you were asking councillor Campbell. And I think that is the worst case, because that's what we did a survey of. I mean, that's regardless of what the licence says, the licence actually suggests something else, but that's another matter.
Yeah, that is another matter, so can we stick to what I asked?
So 76, we are confident that is the worst case, and we're confident with the mitigation that we're proposing, but the way the condition has been framed is that there is effectively a double check on that at the time at which the construction takes place, and we have to satisfy your environmental health officer that the levels of mitigation are achieved in the final design, and if they aren't, then we have to find the way that they are. So we've got a team of people who are very expert in this and are confident that this level of mitigation can be achieved, and that has been designed into this scheme. If it proves that they're wrong, I suspect they may get sued, I'm joking, but they will, we will have to go back and we will have to design it to ensure that they are protected. So I think that deals with the first part of the question, the second part of how do we deal with the residents in the event that they claim they can't sleep because whatever might be going on, I'll pass over to Matt on that and his experience elsewhere.
Yeah, I think I just want to say, and Dan can probably correct me if I'm swaying off here, but in terms of the levels annotated here, there are factors of safety built into the design considerations, and therefore we don't feel, or we hope that, we don't get to the second part of your questions, which is around having to actively manage residents. So what we do have is a very detailed home user guide and a welcome pack for every resident that does end up, you know, renting an apartment from us, and a sample of that pack the case officer has seen, this is a very development of ours in Manchester, and it is a very detailed way of how we expect our residents to live, behave and get on with both the community within the building and the development, and the wider community outside. So within that pack, you can talk about and make reference to any specific points on, you know, neighbourly matters of that nature, so they are aware, albeit we wouldn't necessarily want to draw their attention to the negative, we'd rather promote a positive, you know, there is an event and a charity next door, why don't you get involved, sort of mentality and thinking. But that will then be stipulated in a home users' guide, welcome pack. There is also what we use, a number of apps, so our development, again, I'll reference Manchester One, that has an app that the user at all times of day or night can make use of to inform our building managers and operations teams of any issues that are ongoing, how we can respond and actively manage any ongoing issue that might arise. But again, I want to go back to... But again, I want to go back to the fact that we pride ourselves on good quality design and that good quality statement comes around these calculations and the reliance on our professional team.
Do you have a supplementary?
Sorry, just forgive me. Let's talk about a worst-case scenario and I choose to take one of these flats. And my taste in music is somewhat different to the ones at Cosmic Slop. If I, unlike yourself, if I turn up in your office on a Monday morning and complain about the noise, what process will you follow then?
I think that one is one that will need a bit of careful consideration and a little bit more liaising with our building management team because they will understand the nuances and uniqueness of the building once we start talking to them about staffing numbers, how we approach and address elements of concern or complaints from residents. But our standard approach is there's always, you can raise it at the kind of digital software level, i.e. the app immediately. Then there's the person-to-person consultation with our staff members. And then there's perhaps a re-education or an understanding of why they're not using the mechanical ventilation that's installed within the units and closing the windows that are made on the winter balconies.
Okay, thank you. councillor Brooks, you had another question?
It's kind of, I suppose, following on a little bit from what Colin was saying. Because, I mean, if I were to be renting somewhere in town and it came with a winter garden, it'd come with an expectation for me to be able to use that winter garden. So I suppose, my question is, what is 48 decibels comparable to? If you were to close that window, close the first window and decide that you want to sit in your winter garden, right? Like, what is it comparable to? Is it like a washing machine? Is it like a very loud television? Like, what is it? So yeah, what's stopping residents from that expectation of using it? And I suppose there's a difference between hoping that a thing will be so and things being so.
I think, because that's such a technical question and I'm only a simple planner, I shall call upon somebody who knows the answer to 48 decibels. Dan, do you want to come up?
So do you want to come up to the table and explain that? Thank you.
I think before Dan explains that, I mean, clearly, expectations of people renting in city centre apartments in terms of their amenities, they will be appreciative that they are living in a city centre area. I know you do. Yep. I've lived in the city centre for many years and I appreciate that the reason I live in the city centre is for amenity, for the amenities that are around and I accept that there are certain noise that goes on. But 48, I'll explain, let Dan explain.
Push to talk, there we go. Hi, everyone. So I'm Dan. I was one of the lead acousticians. I actually went down to the MAP development during the Cosmic Slop night as well to undertake the survey and then undertook the design works from there. In terms of what 48 decibels means, the World Health Organisation puts it that 50 decibels is the onset of moderate annoyance. 55 decibels is the onset of when people can start to become significantly annoyed. And you've got to bear in mind that this is significant onset. Just as a bit of a physics lesson on this as well, just because decibels, you know, it's a difficult and logarithmic scale. 10 decibels is typically, subjectively considered to be halving or doubling in loudness. So it's quite a large jump going from something like 40, for example, up to 50. It is twice as loud. So 46 decibels, that's something along the lines of, you know, when your fridge buzzers or when your washing machine is running in your apartment as well. But like I said, 50 is typically seen as the onset of annoyance. Most guidance within the UK, which is followed in the British standards as well, talks about noise levels not exceeding 55 decibels on a balcony. So that is very specific in guidance. I believe that it's mirrored in the Leeds guidance. I'm just going to look at Simon over there. So yeah, that is a careful consideration. So that design level has been met as well. There was a question earlier about the, how much headroom was potentially built into this design as well, which I think leads from this question. In terms of the noise levels that have been designed to internally, Leeds is about the most stringent noise guidance in terms of controlling noise from pubs and clubs, specifically when it comes to what we call low-frequency noise, which is the bassy-boomy stuff, which is where Cosmic, which Cosmic Slop, you know, produce because they run techno nights and techno music, electronic music. In terms of the noise targets, there's something called the Morehouse curve, which is something contained in the Manchester guidance as well. That in Manchester guidance is determined as being inaudibility or near-inaudibility. Leeds guidance is more stringent than that. And we have 10 decibels worth of headroom in the design in the bedrooms at night. So the design mitigation method is close the winter garden, close your internal door. If it's during your overheating period in the summer months, you could also turn on mechanical comfort cooling as well. So you have the operation of ventilation and your mechanical thermal comfort. And you are, you should experience a level that is half as loud as inaudibility in your bedroom, to put it into context. So as Manchester puts it, Morehouse curve represents inaudibility. Leeds guidance, which we've designed to from the outset, is even more stringent than that. And in terms of the noise levels that we calculated to occur within that bedroom, based on the worst-case noise levels that Cosmic Slop produced during the loudest point in any particular, what we call frequency band, so at any tone, we've taken the loudest tone from each of the points. You have 10 decibels worth of headroom, so you should be half of the target internal noise levels. Half of inaudibility, to put it that way. Of course I can.
Simon, do you just want to explain the Leeds guidance, just so panel members are aware of that? Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. So we have developed our own in-house guidance based on various national policies. And we seek quite a tight standard, as the applicant consultant has mentioned. And we engage with the applicant consultant on a number of occasions when they were preparing the noise reports and before they went out on to do the noise survey work. So the technical design that they put forward resolves our concerns by mitigating the noise such that there is sufficient headroom. And in addition to that design, we've also requested a planning condition to require post-completion testing to verify that those measures have been implemented correctly and have achieved what they've set out to do. So that gives us additional reassurance that the noise mitigation is appropriate and can be, you know, checked.
Yeah, thank you. I've got councillor Cohen next on my list. Oh, sorry, councillor Brooks, did you have a supplementary?
Sorry, thank you, Chair. So, right. I think you partly explained, kind of, how it can go from 76 decibels with what looks like a smaller opening and more protection to 48 and then a larger opening with a sort of similar amount of, like, double glazing or whatever it is. And then it'd be 15. Like, I can't really get my head around how that works.
So the windows and the winter gardens would be closed and then the air would be brought in for ventilation through a mechanical system? And then it would be cooled as well if you?
No, no, I understand that. I'm saying, I don't understand how it can go from 76 to 48 to 15.
Okay, so the noise level reduced, so the noise level at the facade, which was measured during the survey, was 76 outside. Due to the first skin of the facade, which is the winter garden with the window closed, that then reduces down to 48. And then with the second skin of the facade with the window closed, that reduces down to 15.
What I'm saying is, how comes it, when it's got a larger, it's got, on the inside, it shows it's got a larger hole? So like, if you've got, I don't know what you're going to be building it out of, like, concrete, whatever, like, but that's solid and glass isn't. So I don't understand how, if you've got a gap in the materials of the building, why it would have that big a reduction.
Sure. So the outer skin of the facade is not overdesigned, so it's not particularly enormous thick glazing there. So that's why there's seemingly sort of less of a reduction from the outside to the winter garden. And then the actual skin of the building, where the protection from day-to-day noise comes from as well, is actually the internal leaf, so that's from the yellow area to the green area. And that's, the reason that you get that sound reduction's been done through very, very specific analysis to calculate the sound reduction that will happen across that separating element.
So is there a reason why that sound reduction can't be applied to the outer then, rather than the inner?
It could be, but the target criteria are for within the bedroom and within the balcony. And the target criteria are 55 on the balcony and we're reducing it down to 48. And this is outside of what's typically considered habitable hours as well. So balcony use guidance suggests that it should be 55 decibels during seven o'clock in the morning till 11 o'clock at night. So the fact that we're achieving 48 even during the night time during a Cosmic Slop event is really, really going beyond if the residents do wish to use that space. And then the internal target in the bedroom at night is 15. So this is typical practice of how developments of this nature would be designed.
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to bring in councillor Cohen next.
Thank you, Chair. You talked about the renters' pack that will share information about the mixed use. Will that information be given to people before they rent? So they know what they're letting themselves in for, so to speak? So when I buy a house, I get a homebuyers' pack, which tells me all the reasons I should not buy this property. Solicitors speaking, we give you every reason under the sun why the deal you are about to do is an unmitigated catastrophe. Do it at your own peril. Partly because our insurers insist we do that. But is there going to be an equivalent for somebody wanting to rent one of these? Where you're going to share that information before so they come in with eyes wide open?
Yeah, as much as I would love to sell them online and they fly off the shelves as quickly as they, we wish they would be rented and taken up. The usual process is a visit and a tour around the building, get them really excited to be living within our building, within the community. And it's at those points in time where we can take them through all the facilities. So from roof terrace offering right down through the courtyard, introduce them to how rooms, units are operated and also to which room or unit they would prefer to live in. And that's where we can highlight, lowlight, you know, bring to attention anything that we deem necessary.
Yeah, can and will are two separate things. So I must, is, so it's not as a matter of course, as a matter of course, you wouldn't be sharing the mixed-use feature of Mabgate and the noise potential of the apartment they may be about to rent?
Again, it would come down to an operational cell point. We can, should, would, depending on where, you know, elements lie, sit down and look at a protocol on how to address the tour of the building.
Can I just come in as well, just to say that this is a rental product? Clearly, if it proves to be that these are problematic properties, they won't rent. And that is what has been designed into this scheme, is to ensure that these properties are of a high quality and are rentable. And if they aren't rentable, people will close their lease and walk away. And there will be a constant churn. If a churn, it may even be that there is nobody. If it's such a problem, we are so confident that we've taken account of all the mitigation, councillor Cohen, that is necessary to protect the residents in this area. But, and that's as much as we can possibly do.
Okay, councillor Carroll, please, next.
Thank you, yeah. In fact, after I indicated, Dan came close to the questions I was asking, but couple of points really then, and then I just want to get some more solid answers, if we can, to some of the points that have been made previously. I think one thing we're all aware, there are lots of people who rent and live in properties they're not 100% happy with. Not everyone has a choice of having a perfect property all the time. So I guess otherwise our mailbags would be quite empty if people didn't live anywhere, they wanted to complain all the time. So there will be people living in them. I guess, no, I'd seen the condition on the welcome pack and this is a question I'll probably put to officers afterwards. But if I've moved in there of an evening, and actually, would you mind just going to the next slide? Which shows the, oh, sorry, it wasn't the next one, that one, thank you, with the internals there. So if I've moved in there and I, first, will I receive a welcome pack that says, "I have to keep my winter garden closed at night because of difficulties with noise"? Is my first question. If I suddenly decide I love leaving those doors to the winter garden open, I put a bookcase in the way because there's nowhere else to put it and I'm going to leave them open all the time, and then I come to you with a complaint, how will I be told, "I'm afraid you've signed up to the fact that you will keep your winter garden closed to alleviate the noise?" So you cannot have that complaint unless you close that? I think that's really what we're looking for here. So, one, will that welcome pack be provided to me before I take out the property? That quite clearly stipulates, there are events nearby, this is a vibrant community and we know who our neighbours are. Because of this, this is how this is designed in and we would ask you to always keep the winter garden doors closed at all times or through the night for the noise. And if I don't do that, how will that complaint then be held? Because I'm sure there will be several people that will love to leave those doors open all the time, feel the outside in, let's say, bring the outside into the apartment. I would not like their complaint to be in any way upheld from that because we've had this conversation here.
I think just in terms of one point you picked up, in the instance, someone used a bookcase in front of or something of that nature. Again, we are landlords and somewhat active managers of the spaces and we have a specification within the apartments that doesn't necessarily allow additional furniture and ancillary items of that nature to be freestanding and moving about. So we'll actively manage those spaces. So if someone wants to come to us and complain and say, "Well, look, I leave my windows and doors open all the time", we will say that's not in keeping with the management of the space. And the management of the space is dictated and depicted within that home user guide.
Okay, thank you. councillor Khan, you wanted to come with another question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Andrew, if you can go to the CGI, you know, looking at the MAP charity. It's a lovely picture, by the way. That's it, yeah. I mean, when myself and Colin were on the site visit this morning, we were saying, oh, well, Colin says, "There's no trees on here. I know you mentioned you're going to plant about three trees in your presentation. Is there any scope to plant some more trees?" And Andrew, you've done a brilliant job to take that picture. Actually, there's no cars at that time. People are nicely walking when we were there. It's a different picture altogether. So my question is about landscaping. Are we going to get more trees on, on Mabgate? Landscaping as well, and what type of trees will there be?
I believe that the number of trees that have been presented here are the level at which your council wanted because of the work that's taken place on Mabgate. There's been obviously a lot of public realm improvements in Mabgate. We can certainly, and it could be a condition of the reserve matters, that we consider further trees on that area if it is feasible. But I look to officers if they feel it is feasible. I don't see why we might not look at more trees if we can achieve them.
So I'm just going to bring our Howes officer in now, thank you.
Thank you. I believe in the original design of the scheme for Mabgate, there were street trees. However, there are significant number of statutory undertakers services under the footway, which made it prohibitively expensive, not impossible, but prohibitively expensive to put street trees along there. That was the original intention, but when they looked, that was going to take a significant amount of funding. That is why there are not street trees. And I think suspect that it would therefore be, you know, it's a matter for the panel to decide whether they think that it's reasonable to put that condition on this development.
Okay, did you want to answer any more of that question?
Yes, I think, I mean, if, and I wasn't aware of what the statutory utilities are beneath there, but clearly if they are so inhibitive to the planting of trees, then clearly that is probably good reason. Having said that, if we go to the landscape scheme, I think, Andrew, I don't know if you could just... The landscape scheme's been very carefully considered, perhaps the one before, is it, Andrew? There. The focus, given the constraints externally to the site, has been to landscape internally. We feel that this is a very strong landscape approach to the scheme. If members have some concerns with this, then, you know, we could certainly take it away and have a look further. But we do have to take account of constraints that may exist in the area for delivery. We've got issues obviously here. We've got a culvert beneath the property or adjacent to the property, which again serves to constrain in some ways large-scale tree planting.
I'm just going to bring Lisa back in.
I mean, we can certainly revisit whether, you know, there will be the information from the Public Realm Works to see whether there are any slots that potentially we could get street trees in. So under the landscaping condition, it is something that we could be revisited, but it is very much subject to what's actually deliverable on site.
You have a supplementary, councillor Khan?
Thank you. Just to follow on from there, because as you know, if you look at the area, there's not much green space within the area, and it's lovely to see some of the garden on the yard. Will that be open to member of public or will it be just for the developers?
Yes, the intention is that that will be, it'll be a through route to Millwright. So the public can walk through that area, use that area. So it will be a public amenity. And you will have also perhaps picked up in the officers' report as well, councillor Khan, that there's an obligation on the developer to provide green space contributions to nearby green space as well. So as a consequence, there is a, there's a very strong emphasis on ensuring that the amenity that is delivered by the scheme is appropriate for residents and will actually benefit local people as well.
Okay, I don't have any indications of further questions for the applicant representatives. So what I'm going to suggest is I'm conscious that we do have the materials or a sample of the materials that will be used. I'm going to suggest that we adjourn the meeting for 10 minutes while members can have a look at those materials and a comfort break at the same time, and we'll reconvene at quarter past three. Okay, thank you. Apologies, microphone on. So I can see councillor Campbell and councillor Cohen, councillor Carlisle, councillor Brooks. Right, councillor Campbell, do you want to start us off, please?
Well, I suppose the first question, Chair, is could we have the air conditioning turned off because I'm frozen?
Okay, can someone turn the air con off? Thank you. Okay. Councillor Campbell, do you have a question for officers as well?
Yes, I do, actually.
Right, okay.
We're just, right, okay. Okay, just a range of general questions around the entirety of the development. Can I ask a question in relation to Lady Beck? So if we looked at the landscaping, at the landscaping, it shows Lady Beck part of it on there and then it disappears underground, as it does on numerous occasions in that area. Where does it go in relation to the site? Question one. There's a reference in the papers to archaeology or the archaeological remains that potentially are underneath the site. And I wonder if somebody could explain to me what we're expecting to happen in relation to the archaeological works before it commences. I suppose it would be useful for us if officers have the information about any response we've had from other council departments, particularly in relation to safeguarding. I didn't think about that on site, but I can see there might be an issue. So I'd be interested if we've got anything about that. And I sup, well, I'll leave it at that for now.
So in terms of the Lady Beck, as you can see, it's this blue line here that runs to the back of Building B and in between Byron Street. And then it just comes out here and then goes into the Millwright development, which is consented for student accommodation. In terms of the YS comments, that's only triggered on demolition of the building. And Phil, I don't know if there's anything you can add to that? Thank you.
Yes, I think I can, sorry. There'll be a standard condition, archaeological condition.
Yes, I think I can, sorry. There'll be a standard condition, archaeological condition, which will require an archaeological investigation in accordance with a brief that will be provided by YUS. And I anticipate that that brief will require firstly a desk-based study, which will look at map evidence to work out where the buildings were, the buildings on this site from the early 19th century. And a watching brief. So when the demolition takes place and the construction's workplace, there'll be an architect looking in holes basically to see what comes up and a record will be made of the remains.
So in terms of consultations with other departments, we consulted the education at the hybrid stage and we didn't get any comments back on safeguarding. And we haven't had any concerns raised about safeguarding. However, the concerns that have been raised on safeguarding from MAP and other objectors, we've considered in the report and given our sort of views and commentary on the implications of that. So that's been the extent of consultations on safeguarding. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything you wanted to ask in addition councillor Campbell or shall I move on to the next question?
Well, I think I'll respond in comments to that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cohen.
Yeah. One of my questions was going to be around the safeguarding to officers from children's services, specifically who are ultimately for us the custodian of where that responsibility sits. And so it's disappointing that we don't have officers who can speak to that today. My wider question really relates to how we would treat, well, yeah, how the council would treat a noise complaint. So the noise complaint would and could come directly from a resident, not from the landlord, but from a resident to our noise nuisance team. How will the council treat those complaints in the event, for example, the resident leaves both sets of windows open and says, "I can't get to sleep, it's a hot summer's night, I can't get to sleep", and when I put the mechanical cooling on, it does my hearing because I don't like that noise, "I can't get to sleep because of the noise of cosmic slop", how are we going to treat that complaint?
Sure. So we would receive the complaint as we do with all complaints and we would have to consider what this planning permission has altered in terms of the nature of the area and what measures were put in place to design out the problems. And then it would be, you know, if it was a case that they were choosing to open the windows and circumvent the noise mitigation measures, then it would be unreasonable to take action on that. So in sort of brief terms, it would have to be a consideration of what mitigation measures have been put in place to deal with that noise impact and, yeah.
There is a general principle, isn't there, that coming to a nuisance isn't a defence to the nuisance. In other words, if you build something, the fact that a nuisance has been there for 100 years, if you build something new and it becomes a nuisance to the new occupier, then the nuisance has to be addressed. That's the essential legal position with a nuisance in terms of law. That's correct, isn't it?
Yeah, Amy, can you come in on that?
I think when we're considering this planning application, we have to consider the civil regulations and any obligations to be necessary to make the development acceptable in planning terms. And I think what we've got here in our draft conditions is all that we can ask for it to be necessary. I'm happy to go and look into nuisance for you. I don't have the law of nuisance at my fingertips.
Okay, so at the risk of being slightly tiki, you can trust me on this one that I'm right on the law of nuisance. Enough years of civil litigation, but the question, in a way, it doesn't really matter. The bit I'm trying to get to is how we're going to deal with the inevitable complaints and you've reassured me on your answer. That was all I was trying to get to.
Simon, you're going to come in, yeah?
So I was just going to sort of clarify the agent of change principle and how that's changed how we assess nuisance. So, yeah, I don't think I need to go any further really.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carlisle, next please.
Thank you. Actually, I was going to ask the same question as Dan regarding our antisocial behaviour in noise team. I'll ask a similar question just worded differently. I'm not sure we'll have the detail here. But were I on the balcony at 2am, in my winter garden, sorry I should say, at 2am and the noise was there at 45 decibels and I made a complaint that I would like to enjoy my winter garden all through the night because it's a flat that I pay my rent for, in what way would that complaint be dealt with? I guess I would ask exactly the same question about if I were complaining and it was 15 decibels inside my apartment and I made a complaint that the noise was going. Are we satisfied that those noise levels that we've, that we'll be conditioned in and that we've modelled against are not significant enough for a complaint to be upheld at the 45 decibels in the winter garden if I choose to enjoy it at 2am or at 15 decibels in the apartment when I have got both the windows closed?
So again, when we assess a nuisance, we take into account various factors on how rooms or land or whatever would be used, what time of day and what's reasonable. So the levels that we've designed to and are shown on the slide above are really tight, really stringent noise levels. And achieving those gives us a great certainty of comfort in that noise is unlikely to be a problem. Having said that, people do complain about noise, people have different expectations. But if I were in that apartment assessing nuisance as a result of a complaint, it would be very difficult to sort of uphold that and officers would make a judgement on that.
Yep, councillor Carlisle, you want to come back, yeah?
Just to save me making the same thing in comments, I mean, very difficult isn't would uphold. And I think that's the difficulty, that the answers we got from the developer weren't necessarily 100% clear in that regard as to what the complaint would be if they weren't leaving the, if they decided to leave the winter garden doors open, for instance, and the complaint's not really giving me that confirmation now that what we've done here would satisfy any complaint that would be made in the future, either to the landlord or to ourselves. And I think that's the kind of reassurance I'm looking for on this.
You want to come back, yeah?
I mean, it's, you know, we're talking hypotheticals. I mean, like I say, I can only sort of repeat that the noise levels that are being shown to be achieved with the noise mitigation design are significantly below the levels that we seek as a planning design criteria and give a high level of comfort in terms of the likelihood of complaints being upheld. So I can't say there will be no complaints, but I can say that if we assess noise and it was at the levels that have been designed to, it's unlikely we would be able to take that forward as a valid complaint. Very unlikely.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brooks, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not reassured at all about that. I don't think it's hypothetical that a resident would want and expect a quiet enjoyment of a, what's essentially a balcony. So, I mean, you know, we're here to try and remove that kind of conflict between existing organisations and uses and new, the new, I guess. So like, I'm not reassured on that at all. But what I'd like to ask about is the safeguarding side of things. So MAP charity is clearly an educational establishment that caters for some of the most vulnerable children in the city. How are other educational establishments assessed for overlooking and safeguarding? And has this development been assessed in the same way?
Yeah. I'll let Andy come in on the details, but from a, from a planning point of view, we have many situations where schools, educational uses are close to nearby other types of use, including residential properties. So I think the context has to be taken into account. This area does have schools next to residential properties and we've looked at whether the proposal is setting up a new situation which actually increases the safeguarding risk. And looking at this in the round, we don't believe it is. Yes, there are children coming to from this site, but there are already existing residential properties which overlook this site. And so we don't think the safeguarding risk is significantly different.
Okay, councillor Khan, next please.
Thank you, Chair. Just on the safeguarding, I'm not satisfied at all so this afternoon. The answers we have been given, and I'll just leave it there for the time being. Just on the, at least on parking, parking's a big issue around Lincoln Green and Mabgate area. What measures or what will be doing to make sure we manage traffic and also parking in the area?
So currently, Mabgate itself is covered with different, mainly TROs which are time limited waiting. There will be some modifications to that to facilitate the ad hoc type of deliveries to residents as part of the highway works. But in addition to that, we have an agreed TRO contribution from the hybrid permission to address any parking issues within 800 metres of this development. That are, you know, if we have, you know, we can see that there's a direct impact from this development, then we can use that money to address that on street parking.
Thank you, Lisa. 800 metres, I know if I'm renting an apartment at this development, I'm sure I'm going to be parking a bit further away from 800 metres. And who's going to be affected? The residents or burnt offs are going to be affected. And I think that's not a good enough answer actually. And there's only about 17 car parks for this development and, no. I know we've got TR already in place and especially at the peak time when we were having conversations, we've got St James Hospital on our doorstep and we've got people from city centre coming and leaving as well. And the traffic in the area, it's honestly, it's really, really bad. And it's like a car park, should I say, on those, on the roads. So how would we be able to make sure we address those? What infrastructure improvements are we going to be making sure, taking place?
Okay, so there's also a contribution from the development agreed at the hybrid application, permission stage towards improvement works on Regent Street, which are more to do with non-motorised means of travel. So, yes, we think in this location, it's a sustainable location, it's got amenities close by, there's a very limited amount of parking on site, but it's not for this development to deal with existing issues in the vicinity. Only where they're contributing to those issues. And that this is why we've agreed contributions, we've agreed, you know, some highway works on Mabgate just to provide the access and to allow for the sort of ad hoc deliveries, pick up, drop off, et cetera. But it is something that colleagues in transport strategy are looking at in the wider area and traffic management, about, you know, trying to look at what other measures we can put in place to make sure that routes remain unblocked by traffic. But with the best will in the world, you can't engineer out poor driving either. And, I mean, I know that parking services will be down here on a regular basis to try and enforce against parking, which is illegal parking, but they can't be there 24 hours.
Thank you, Lisa. I've got one more question, Chair.
Okay, and then we'll move on, yeah.
Andrew, do we have a construction management plan for the area? And could you just expand, what does it include, please?
Yeah, we do have a construction management plan which was secured on the hybrid planning permission. Just bear with me while I try and find the condition number. It's only required on prior to the commencement of works. So they'll submit the details for highways officers to review and agree those. I don't know if, Lisa, you wanted to expand any further?
And through that, we do liaise with our colleagues in network management and in traffic and we do look to agree traffic routing as well as hoarding lines, vehicle movements, you know, so that we do try and make sure that we cover all eventualities so that we will have, you know, you know, that we, if the developers aren't, you know, doing what they've agreed to do, we can come back and say, "Hang on a minute, you need to be doing it this way". But we do try and make sure that construction is managed in an appropriate way.
Okay, councillor Anderson, please.
I apologise that I didn't make it on to the site visit, even though I tried to, but for obvious reasons I wasn't able to do it. But, so these questions might seem a bit naive. One is, to come back to partly what councillor Carrick has been talking about, visitor parking. I can see the point of restricting people who purchase, they are purchasing the properties knowing that there is not a car parking space. So they're making a valued judgement. The rights and wrongs of that, we can have a debate on another day. But if someone was visiting, where would they be expecting to park? Because if they're going to end up farther up the road and they're happy to walk in, then the neighbours around there are going to be the ones who are going to suffer. And it's a bit much waiting until the problem's occurring. So that's one, number one. Number two is, where are the bus stops around there so that people can access this location? And then the final one is, is there any place that they could put Beryl's bikes down there? Because it would then promote the cycling, they would then be on hand, they don't necessarily then have to have a bike themselves, that if people were coming from the train station, they could get on a Beryl's bike, come down, drop it off, et cetera, et cetera. Have they thought about that? And the final question is, and I genuinely am confused over this. How many things can we take into consideration today? Because the outline planning permission has been, already been set and a lot of the things we've talked about today, in my personal view, would have been debated at outline stage. And I'm confused as to what I can take as a material fact today and what I can't because it's already been agreed at the outline stage. Because I am confused, honestly, I am.
So as I say, there is parking available on Mabgate itself, which is time limited. At the moment, it's not more than four hours. In terms of longer stay parking, there are various parking, you know, most of the car parks and things not that far away. I haven't got the information with me or to hand. I haven't got the information with me or to hand. Yeah, and then in terms of Beryl bikes, it's really, yeah, they are looking at where the additional locations can be. Um, you know, on, on, um, now in large applications that are coming through and within the Beryl bike area, we are securing space within development, but this came before the Beryl bikes were launched, I believe. So, um, so yes, so there is something that we, you know, we are looking at where there'll be locations and I hope actually, because we've got quite a wide footway on Mabgate, so it's somewhere probably that they are. And as more residential development come forward, there is, you know, clearly, and that, you know, we've got education establishments there as well. So you can see that it would be an ideal location to put some in, yeah.
So, so in terms of what we're looking at today, um, the, the existing hybrid permission has already secured for the applicant the nature of the use on the site, the scale of, maximum scale of the development and maximum layout extent of the development. Uh, what members have been asked to look at now is a detailed design. So it's the appearance of the buildings, it's the, the internal, the landscaping treatment. Um, it's the, uh, the detailed access route through, um, the site. And it's the, sorry, Andy, you'll have to help me on the other matters.
Oh, sorry. Um, so reserve matters is for the appearance, the layout of... Sorry, um, so the reserve matters is for appearance, layout, scale, and landscaping of the development.
So in practical terms, is safeguarding already been evaluated one way or the other at the outline stage?
In terms of principle, coexistence of the principle of the use, yes. So the, the, the principle of residential use next to uh, an education, a charity which caters for young children, young people, has been considered.
Noise mitigation? Is that now or is that already been?
The, the approach, that was considered at the outline stage. Because the agent of change, the noise mitigation is coming from this agent of change consideration, i.e. there's an existing noisy use already. We're introducing a potentially vulnerable noise use, so that was already considered as part of that principle of use.
Sorry, you also asked about bus stops, apologies. Um, there are buses that go down Regent Street, so we're actually very close by, um, in and out.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Councillor Khan, you indicated you wanted to come in again. You, you don't, okay. Sorry, councillor Campbell.
Just a couple. I know we've touched on noise quite a bit. Are we confident, or are officers confident that there will not be a noise implication or a noise issue in relation to any of the other flats? Other than the ones we've talked about? I suppose the other question is, looking out of the window of, um, what's it, MAP today, or the mill. They, there were a number of interesting buildings on the other side of, is it Milwright Street? And I wonder if we've assessed the impact on those buildings within the conservation area. Can I just go back to the point you've made? In relation to noise stroke agents of change, all the rest of it. Are we saying that the outline, the outline permission accepted that, well, what are we saying the outline permission accepted in the way of noise? And if, if it helps you, which actually then precludes what we might say today?
Yeah. You want, you want to, you did.
Yeah, so as part of the hybrid application, um, there was an extensive noise test and survey carried out on one of the events held at MAP. Um, and that then transpired into various mitigation measures that have been put forward today in terms of these winter gardens. And also that there's no over glazing for residential apartments facing the courtyard. And so they were the mitigation measures that were secured at part of the hybrid application.
I'm not talking about the courtyard, I'm talking about the rest of the development. Are we confident the rest of the development is, is okay in effect?
Yeah, so, so a lot of the focus today has been on, on that worst exposed sort of facade. Um, the rest of the development will have varying levels of mitigation embedded in depending on the orientation and what noise, you know, there's, there's roads surrounding. So, so those ones will have different levels of mitigation applied. So, um, yeah, from, from my perspective, I'm, I'm happy with the overall mitigation in the acoustic design.
And presumably, sorry, because it throws up another question, it always does, doesn't it? Um, so as you've said to us, you believe that if the work on the courtyard would protect the council. Would the works that we specify or specify for the rest of the building also protect the council?
Yeah, so, um, again, I've, I've checked through the, the mitigation measures proposed and I'm, I'm happy with what's been, um, suggested as, as a way of designing out potential problems from noise. Um, and I've also recommended, um, a validation condition to verify those noise levels. And I don't see why we can't include some, some samples on the other elevations as well to, to demonstrate that too. Um, but yeah, I mean, like, like I say, most of the topic has been over the, the courtyard side.
Okay, I have no more indications of councillor Brooks.
Sorry, Chair. But not really, just a little bit. Um, yeah, have, have we had any daylight impact assessment done? And, uh, there hasn't been much talk about the outlook impact for MAP Charity and what the, um, what the, the impact would be on the potential income generation for MAP Charity as a result of that? So I'm just wondering if that was taken into account at all?
Uh, yeah, a daylight assessment was carried out in terms of the surrounding uses and the proposed uses. Um, but this did not take into account the MAP use because it's not a sensitive use. It's a commercial use. And so the noise, the daylight assessment only carried out on the existing residential surrounding the site and any impact created by the massing of the development.
Yeah, the, the industry standard which is used, which is the BRE uh, assessment methodology, only deals with residential to residential. So putting that to one side, as the report states, officers have done their own quality judgment on what the likely impact of this development is on neighbouring amenity of all types of users. And our own view is that the gaps between windows and the, the nature of the surrounding context of the area, i.e. higher densities, narrower streets, uh, is, is representative in this development. So the two are compatible. This represents or reflects the existing type character of the area. And on that basis in the report, we think it's acceptable. It, we, we accept that there, there will be impact on neighbours. You're not going to have a situation where uh, people won't be able to see each other or see each other's sights. But that's already the existing character of the area.
Can I, can I just come back then on, so, I mean, the, the MAP building, Hope House, has varying different uses per floor, right? And one of them is, has been touched on before is educational. So surely if you've got an educational use, there needs to be a certain level of sunlight penetration in order for that to be a healthy environment for young people.
So as I said, we've taken a quality judgment. The fifteen to twenty-one metre gap for the majority of that relationship between Hope House and the building B, we think is acceptable. It's reflected elsewhere in terms of the gap between buildings. The other, the other thing that we've done, we, we, we worked hard at, is making sure that the design of those winter gardens, the balconies, is such that when people are sitting in their accommodation, they don't have direct lines of sight through into the windows at MAP. That they're either looking upwards, um, or because of the height of the parapets.
Okay.
Just to say, all those issues in terms of the, the scale and the heights were looked at at the outline stage and the maximum parameters were set at certain levels which this scheme falls within those limits that were set at the outline parameter stage. So the impact in terms of lights, et cetera, were looked at at that point. And have been agreed and approved as shown on this plan here.
Okay, I've got no more, no further indications of questions, so I'm going to move to comments. Uh, do members have comments? Uh, councillor Campbell, first of all.
I'll start us off, Chair, if you like. I, I think because of the depth of questioning today, I think we that there should be an understanding with officers that we, we have some concerns about, uh, this. I appreciate that we cannot discuss the principle because the principle's been agreed. Um, we can't discuss, I suppose, the quantity of development because the quantity of development's been agreed, or the maximum quantity or whatever it was. So that, really, we can't talk much around the numbers of units that have been, um, in place. What I do think we, we need, and, and what I do think we need to talk about perhaps is the design. Now, when we were on site today, we, we looked at some of the drawings. And we were, I was hoping, Delgit, that the CGI you promised us would, would calm my nerves. But, um, I, I think the problem with the development is it's a very large development. We can't get away from that. I think it's, you know, with, with hindsight, if, if, if I could use hindsight, I would say it's probably too large. But I am still only, well, I'm not really convinced that the detailing that we've been, has been talked about is enough to make the building look anything other than a solid concrete, uh, solid brick block. And I'm prepared to be persuaded. Um, but I don't think, or I hope that CGI doesn't do it credit. I hope it's going to be better than that. I appreciate, because we, we talked about it on site this morning, that, um, if you're building a block of build-to-rent flats, there's a basic design, quite frankly. Um, and I think, um, as Steve's already said today, it does what it says on the tin. In effect, it's a block and you've got all those flats in. But I, I am, I'm, I'm not convinced the design is as good as it could be. Strangely enough, I usually raise the issue of the size of flats. And I don't need to do it this time because it, the flats all meet our standard. And I think that should be a marker for other developers. If these people can do it, everybody can do it. I think there also is the issue about affordables. So we usually raise the issue of affordables, but we don't need to do it because actually the affordable levels are reasonable. Again, another message for other developers. The green space I always, always mention because I think, I like the idea of a route through the green space, a, a public route through the green space. I think that's a, a nice feature. And whoever negotiated that, that's a plus. I do think the, the yard, is it, in the middle, is a bit constrained. Um, I don't think the area is, is, is large enough to take the what, the, the planting that's in there because, and it's also surrounded by very large buildings. So I have a suspicion that that would be quite a dark area without a lot of natural light. And that might perhaps need looking at, in my opinion. Um, and I will flag up Lady Beck because we did, the last time we had a development which crossed Lady Beck, and that would be eight years ago now, I think. Uh, we did talk about the principle of opening Lady Beck up. Um, currently, it's a very sterile waterway. If you stand on the bridge and look over, it's just a, a ditch in a concrete. And it would seem to me that we ought to try and grasp the opportunity to open up Lady Beck and create a feature within the green space. And I can see officers really worrying about that. The, the final point ago, I think, relates to the relationship between the foundry and the new development. And I'd say from a personal point of view, the building behind the foundry is too tall. I think it's too tall and too overbearing. And I think there should be capacity within the totality of the development to lose some of that height and mass from that building and perhaps put it somewhere else. In relation to the noise impact and the, and the potential in relation to, um, cosmic slop, I, I think, having listened to this long discussion we've had, if we can cra- craft a condition, if we can craft a condition that in effect does what we've talked about, i.e. creates a situation where the noise transfer between people out enjoying themselves at four o'clock in the morning and the people at home in the flat trying to get to sleep, if we can create that con- condition, then I can accept that you might actually have residential development overlooking this site. Notwithstanding the comments in relation to safeguarding. So those are my general views to get us started, Chair.
Okay, thank you, councillor Campbell. Do I have any comments from other members? Uh, councillor Brooks and councillor Day.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm in, I'm in agreement with councillor Campbell on this, so. Although, for me, it's not about conditioning, it's about removing the winter gardens, to be honest, because I can't, I can't see that there's just too many variables and too much space for conflict between residence and existing use, for me. And it's much better to remove that conflict at this point than it is to try and sort it out later in the day, in my opinion. So I think the winter gardens need to go. And, um, the like, proper, proper treatment to ensure that any any residential, uh, use on that side is, um, usable, I guess. Like, acu- acoustic treatment, because from, from questioning the developer, they were saying that the acoustic treatment was going to be done on the interior, not the exterior. Which, I mean, it don't make much sense to me, but I'm not a developer. Um, but if you're able to do that, then surely you're able to do that on the exterior and reduce that, um, noise transference or whatever the technical jargon is for it. So, um, yeah. Happy with it, apart from that, I guess.
Okay.
And, and the massing, I think the, the massing on that bit needs reducing and putting somewhere else as well.
Okay, I just, Steve wants to come in on the design, I believe.
Thank you, Chair, just to try and help. I think I'd have to disagree and I'd advise otherwise. Can we have a look at that section with the winter gardens? Just to try, I've been listening to your comments and others' comments all afternoon and I'll, I'll try and help. There we go, it's coming up in a minute. That's it. I say in the nicest possible things. It's what they do, that's an illustration. A perfectly believable one in the sense that I understand the members' concerns about sound, but I think in fairness to the applicants, from, they've done an illustration, but when you start dealing with sound, the only word that comes to mind is that's a bit simplistic. The fact is that you're going from 76. Those windows, we need the winter garden to have two goes at stopping the noise. If you try and stop the noise with one barrier, one set of windows, much harder. Those are just illustrated as windows, but in sound and windows and sliding doors, there's all sorts of different worlds. It depends, for example, on how much insulation is in the frame itself, how thick the glass is, how heavy it is, you know. There's various, it's not just like you would see in a typical house, for example. The inner one that's stopping even more, that could be triple glazed. I, I would be fair, I know, for example, when you're dealing with really sensitive things like recording studios or things like that, the really top-end manufacturers could probably knock the 76 to five in one go. But you'll pay 50 grand for the window. You know, it's all relative, you with me? And in this case, the, the applicants are offering us two goes at stopping the noise, that's a believable diagram, and what they can't express to you is the quality of the frames they're using, you with me? So I just thought I'd raise the issue of, it can be done, and the applicants have offered that, so they're obviously getting ready to spess the frames up. They're not just cheating cheerful housing double glazed, you with me? They can be very, you know, but I do think we need the winter garden to have two goes at stopping the noise. Anyway, I'll stop there. Thank you Chair.
No worries, thank you. Councillor Brooks, you want to come back on this point, yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
I think, if it, if it's a case of, like, oh, we have to have this in order for it to work, then there shouldn't be any residential on that, in that building at all, in that case. Because that is going to cause complaints, and then the complaints might shut the charity down. So it's a no from me then, it's not going to happen.
Okay. Councillor Dai, you had a comment as well.
Thank you. Well, a lot of the things that I had on my list that I wanted to bring up at this point have been raised by councillor Campbell and councillor Brooks. I, I think the, the agent of change principle is really, really important in, in this case. And, and what it states is that, that, that new developments have to be integrated effectively with existing businesses. And I'm not convinced that this is. You know, I didn't get a clear answer to whether it was possible to keep those external windows as, as non-opening. We didn't get a clear answer to the specificity of, of the welcome pack and whether it would be really clear about referring to the fact that there was an existing business that had late night openings with plenty of noise and lots of people. I'm still not entirely convinced about the fact that it isn't going to affect the existing work that MAP does. I think that's my, that's my biggest problem. You said we could comment on appearance and layout and scale. Is, is that not being able to comment on, on, on that part of the development? That's the, the only bit I really have a problem with, is that bit that's adjacent to, to, to where MAP are. I, I, I would associate myself with Colin's comments on, you know, size and the green space and other things like that. I don't have a problem with that. It's just that end. I'm really, really uncomfortable about the impact on the existing business of that end bit of the development.
Yeah, I haven't heard any members mention any other part of the application. So I'm guessing it's just that, that end of the building which overlooks the, the courtyard. Everyone is, it seems happy with the, the rest of the design. Do I have any other comments from members? Councillor Campbell, and then I'll bring in officers too.
Just, just, just one, I, which I missed off my list. When we were on site, we were told, if you look at the, the building we're talking about, the last, the one that's controversial, it was mentioned that the, the lift shaft would be external and somewhat disguised as a chimney. And I have to say, I think that's quite a good idea. And in some ways, that's a novel approach, because the building on the opposite side of the road's got the standard concrete block in the middle and off we go. But I, again, I, I've, I've said elements of this, I think we should congratulate the developer on, because elements of this development are well above our policy and are, in some of them are quite innovative, really. And I, I suppose my, my view on the, the winter gardens is, I suppose I, I'm minded to agree because if you put development on that face, on that face into the, if you put development on there, this seems to be an appropriate solution to any noise issue. I mean, can't, members may have a different view and may say there should be no development, but in effect, it's that choice, as far as I can see it. Either we have flats on that side, and I would prefer slightly fewer, or we have no development on that side because that's the only alternative, as I see it.
Okay. Officers, is there anything else that you want to come back on or clarify before we move further?
Yeah, it's, it's really just coming back to this relationship between the proposed development and the MAP charity boundary. That seems to be the main focus of discussion today. And, and we have worked very, very hard. We've been cognizant of this issue from day one. And we worked very hard with our environmental health colleagues, with the developer, and we've encouraged consultation with MAP and tried, and reached out to MAP as well, particularly in terms of noise assessing, testing their most noisy events, and then working from that in terms of how a design solution could be developed. We've been assured by our technical experts and by the developers' technical experts, and these are technical matters, that this solution will work. And from a planning point of view, there are, there are two aspects, two further aspects, which we hope will, will, will deal with the potential conflicts or relationship between the two sites. One is, we've asked, we, we, we've agreed with the applicant that there'll be a condition to test the solution before these flats are occupied, and they have to prove that. And if not, they have to redesign to get the noise levels that we're looking at. And we've been assured by our technical consultants that these noise levels will provide acceptable noise environment for the intended residential use. The other point is, we've, we've asked the developer to make any future occupants of these flats aware of their neighbours next door and what they do next door. And we're suggesting a condition four, which actually requires them to agree with us what's in that pack, that information pack, and also for that information pack to be made available to the residents before they occupy the flat. So we can work through that, because I think that's what members' questioning was getting at, that they want to, in part, be absolutely clear that people coming into this, these flats will be fully aware of the situation that they're going to be within. And I think that, that's what we've done. Clearly, it's for members' prerogative to have a look at this. But we shouldn't just focus on this issue, we need to look at this in the round, and that's what we tried to do in the report. This is a brownfield site, it is regenerating an area. There are already existing residential uses close to Hope Foundry and MAP. And within that context, we think the benefits of the proposals are, should also be given considerable weight. So that's why we're making the recommendation that we are. It's not that we've ignored the issues, we've looked at them in detail. Thank you Chair.
Apologies, sorry microphone on. I'm happy to sum up the debate and, and then most recommendations. Okay, right, thank you.
Okay, so in terms of the comments that members have made, I think councillor Campbell has clearly pointed out some of the positives of the scheme, that it achieves our policy standards for space and for affordable housing. He, the route through the site is a positive. How some of the design elements are, are positive, you know, treatments. There's also been some concern about perhaps the scale of development and the relationship to the southern side with the MAP site. In terms of the, the noise issue, members, I think a lot of members have raised questions about that and the potential impact of MAP's existing activities on future residents on this site, and how we would deal with potential future complaints if they arose. In addition, I think some members have raised the potential safeguarding issue because of the nature of MAP's activities and who they cater to in terms of younger children, and, and how the design of this development could increase risks in, in, in that regard. I think those are the main issues. I think in, in terms of other aspects, there was some questions about parking levels and impact on parking from councillor Khan and I think councillor Anderson. And hopefully, we've addressed how we, we deal with this. From a, from a officer point of view, the bottom, the, the consider, key consideration is, will the proposal lead to road safety issues or not? And the clear advice we're getting from our highways colleagues is that not in this sustainable location where you've got ready access to alternative ways of getting to services. So I think that's, that, those were the key aspects that have been discussed today. Thank you Chair.
Okay. Apologies, the new technology, I keep forgetting to put the microphone on. So based on the summary provided, does a member of the panel want to move the motion, a proposal and second? No. Nobody? Councillor Campbell?
I think, Chair, to stop the meeting grinding to a complete, I will propose that, and there may well be an amendment.
Thank you, very helpful councillor Campbell. So councillor Campbell has proposed the recommendation in our paper. Are there any amendments to that or a second for that? Councillor Cohen, you're seconding the proposal. Any amendments to the proposal?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, we'll move to the vote. So can, indication by a show of hands please, those in favour of the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Those against the recommendation? Okay. So that is, there are no abstentions, so that's three votes in favour and four against, so the recommendation is lost. Okay?
Chair, don't, at this point, we have to provide, we're required, we're required to provide officers with a reason for the refusal.
That's what I was just going to move on to.
Thank you Chair. Obviously, the difficulty is the order here, and I think one of the difficulties is, I would be perfectly happy for a deferral for this to a future meeting to provide more information. The difficulty is, I don't think I'm clever enough to work out exactly all the reasons that everyone may want to add in to that deferral. For myself, it would be further reassurance with work on condition four from appendix one around the welcome pack, and further reassurance from colleagues that any complaints to either the building owner or to ourselves as a council's noise team would not be upheld from these apartments with the winter gardens. I know though that other members may feel they would rather have a look at the proposal without the winter garden. So I, I personally would like a, a few minutes of debate around what people may want to see in a deferral, and then I'm very happy to move that as a, as country to the recommendation.
And I, yeah, absolutely, we've discussed a lot of different elements of this today. Happy to do that, obviously. So councillor Carlisle has, has, you've obviously mentioned the noise complaints. Any other members want to come in on that? Yeah, but what, what we're looking at is, if we, if we are deferring, what, what we want included, reasons for that and what we want including in that. Councillor Campbell?
I, I think I'm quite happy to accept that you might want the deferral, why not? But I think we have to be a bit more specific than further reassurance. So it does say quite clearly what they're proposing to do. We, we have had the comments from the, the developer about the process. We've had comments from our officers about the process. If we don't feel comfortable with that, which we may not, I think it's beholding our nose to be very specific about what, what we would like to know, what reassurance we would like over and above what we've been given. And so I'm sort of looking at you as to say, what do you want?
Yeah, councillor Cohen would like to come in, and then I'd say, we, we need to, we need to decide if we're deferring what we want, what we, on what grounds we are and what we want reassurances on. So if people can, if you do want reassurances on certain aspects that we've discussed today, if you can kind of make a note of those, I'll bring councillor Cohen in in the meantime.
Yeah, I've had the privilege of sitting on this committee for, for so many years. And I think colleagues across the way know for, there is not going to be any real additional assurance, and you know this really, that is going to be over and above that which we have received. This is a bit of an attempt to, to kick it into the long grass. At some point, a decision is going to have to be made. And the truth, if you're not comfortable, then you need to pin your colours to a mast and say, no, it's refused, and this is why. And then there'll be an appeal, and an independent inspector will make a view and probably give a cost award against us, having quoted all the things that our officers have explained to us in great depth today. That's the fair, unless you've got some really clear things that we're not clear about, but I couldn't imagine what they are.
Okay, I've got councillor Khan, councillor Carlisle and councillor Brooks.
Thank you Chair. Just to, I, I would like to officially second councillor Carlisle's proposal for deferral. The reasons are, I'm not being satisfied with a winter garden. I think that needs to go back to the drawing table again and come with a better proposal for that side. So that's, that's the reason I want to defer this as well, Chair.
So.
I don't understand what you're saying, you want a better proposal. Can you explain to me what you're trying to say? Sorry.
Yeah, no, thanks, Colin. As we've discussed this already, if you're going to have a balcony at the back of the MAP charity, and if you're going to stand on the balcony, as councillor Dyke said early on, we've got, it's a nature, we're going to peek through that balcony and just lean over it as well. And if there are young people there, safeguarding is a big concern to myself. So that's the reason I'm saying the balcony needs to go away, and that's why I want the winter garden redesigned again, going back to the drawing table. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, right, councillor Carlisle, please.
Thank you, and I appreciate we need to be very clear in these things. I'm trying to, but I think I'm possibly not as clever as I need to be on this. My concern with this is that I have asked questions around the complaints within the development and how they would be held, how those complaints would be looked into by the management company looking after the apartments. And I've heard warm words. I have been somewhat reassured that they'd go into the detail around why the winter gardens were there. I've also asked that question of officers, and I've been told it's unlikely those complaints would be upheld. They're nice, but that's a 75% of the way there, in my view, around those complaints. I also, looking at the condition four that's on there around the welcome pack, I think it notes what the reason is for that welcome pack, but not expressly what safety for MAP and for residents it's there to provide. So I think it notes that we're looking for that welcome pack to say what the purpose of the winter gardens and the windows and the opening doors to those winter gardens are. But it doesn't expressly tell me that those details need to be laid out to ensure that there are not noise complaints and that the noise mitigation is in effect. So it's on those points that I think I need taking over the line in order to be reassured that a complaint is not going to come in after this development is built from a resident there, and is going to be upheld, and is going to end up affecting MAP charity. I am not sufficiently reassured on that at the moment. I know other colleagues had thoughts around the safeguarding and the open windows, and very happy to include those, but I think I would need other members to come in with their thoughts around that.
Thank you, councillor Carlisle. Councillor Khan, when you refer to the winter gardens, are you referring to the glazing of them? Because we've had discussions around whether those could be opened or not, and that kind of feeds into councillor Carlisle's concern about the noise. So when you say, looking back at the design of the winter gardens, are you looking for a window that cannot be opened, which addresses kind of part of your point as well with the noise? Yeah, that's part of what you want looking at? Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Brooks next.
Thanks, Chair. So my concern is that residents do have a right to quiet enjoyment of their home, and I believe that there's going to be some additional rights given to tenants around this kind of thing, like the right to have a pet and things like this, right? So I am very concerned that 48 decibels of noise, which is apparently the level of a washing machine, I'm assuming at spin, in a supposedly usable part of the flat, i.e. the winter garden, that's not quite enjoyment to me, that's, yeah. So I'd feel a lot more comfortable if that was removed and proper treatment given to the exterior of the building to prevent, to prevent noise transference and also for the windows not to be able to be opened. Like, when we raised this with the developer about, oh, you know, maybe you can just have them not be opened, they weren't really willing to consider that. So, yeah. That's my concern. So removal of the winter gardens and for proper treatment, and if the proper treatment can't be put on, then it needs a different use on that part of the building.
On that particular elevation there? Okay, and I'm just going to bring Simon in because I think he wants to clarify the 48 decibels.
Thank you, Chair. So 48 decibels isn't the level of a washing machine in spin cycle. That's sort of much higher. It's quite a quiet level, it's probably about the same sound level as this sort of in the room when not many people, when no one's talking. And as the applicant's consultant had said, for external space such as balconies or gardens, our criteria is for 55 or below. So this clearly is a quite a quiet level of sound when events are going on that map. And obviously, events are not all the time, they're at night time generally. So it's more likely that people would be using the winter garden as it's designed to mitigate noise. And the resulting noise level is significantly below our criteria for internal spaces. So, I mean, perhaps I wasn't clear enough earlier on, but I can quite categorically say that if the noise levels are as outlined in the design, there would not be an actionable nuisance to take forward. And I understand the, you know, the sort of concerns that members have and MAP have regarding the effect that it might have in their business. But this solution that's been offered as a way of designing out the problem is a proven method, and I'm confident, and the applicant's consultant is confident, that this will achieve that level. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The frequency of the events that take place are not every night of the week. I understand they're once a month, is it? Is that, yeah, around?
Yeah, around that time, yeah. Once a month or every two months.
Right, okay. So we're...
I'm struggling. I understand we're concerned, and I understand we've all been under a lot of pressure. We've all had hundreds of emails about this. And none of us want the events to stop. And so we're desperate to try and make sure that they don't stop. I think there are two elements to this, what we're saying, aren't there? There's one, your point in relation to the welcome pack and things like that. It would seem to me that's relatively easy to solve because we just simply say, do us a draft copy of the welcome pack. That's relatively easy, isn't it? And, you know, what would be the complaints procedure? Could you detail as in writing the complaints procedure, full stop, as it affects the tenants and the council? So that's relatively easy to deal with. Okay? So we'll file that one quite easily, I think. The other one is, it seems to me there's a general principle about whether you allow residential development on that face or not. And we're dancing around it, I'm sorry to say. Your two comments dance around this problem. We either say, you can put residential development on this frontage with a sound solution which more than meets the council's criteria. And this is a difficult bit for me, because when we get to appeal, what we're going to say. Or we can say, we think it's inappropriate to put residential on that face here. You need to redesign the internals of that building and point them somewhere else. That's what we need to say. It's not, we can't, you know, the winter garden solution is a bit odd. In fact, I can't actually, off the top of my head, remember anything in the last 10 years that's looked anything like this. But we've been told, haven't we, by our experts, that it is a solution that works? And, to be honest, the other solution, which is to take it well together and do something else on the front, is very, very, very expensive and lays us open, in my opinion, to a charge that we're being unreasonable because there is a solution which is a better value for money. So I think, I have to say, we either say no development on that frontage or no windows or, you know, opening onto that frontage, and it's a solid thing, or we say, notwithstanding the points about the complaints, we have to accept what they're saying. And, you know, if we're going to do that, if we want to do what you two want, I think you have to say that, there's no development, and that's the way forward.
So councillor Campbell, are you making a proposal? I mean, you did very good summary up there, which I was just going to mention. I've never seen winter gardens on a development like this either.
I've already said, haven't I, Chair, that I, to help the debate, I moved the resolution. I think it will be very difficult for the council to resist at appeal the solution they've put forward to mitigate noise. Very difficult. In fact, I think it would be impossible. I take the point in relation to the complaints, because in the end, somebody will complain. Whatever you do, however nice you are, whatever measures you put in place, there's always somebody. And I think we need, I understand that we need confidence that it's not going to come back and bite us. And I think that's relatively easy to do.
Sorry, we're just conferring. Right, okay, yeah. I haven't seen a development with this mitigation before, as you said councillor Campbell. But it, obviously, from the diagram in front of us at the moment, it does mitigate noise. The condition already does require us to agree the welcome pack as a council. So we've already got that condition in, that we would already have to agree that. So I was going to ask if you wanted, anyway, I'll leave that a second because I can see councillor Brooks is indicating.
Yeah, I mean, it mitigates noise if used as indicated, but even from the diagram, it says complies with Lead City Council Planning Guidance for Noise in the interior of the apartment. It doesn't say that about the winter garden. So that's my problem with it, is that the treatment doesn't make it so that the livable areas of the, of the flat as a whole are made so that the, within those limits.
Councillor Cohen?
I think there's a problem here, which is that certain elected members don't want to be assured by what we are being told over and over again by the officers of this council who are politically neutral and whose job is to give us the appropriate advice on an application. They don't have skin in the game. Their job is to give us neutral, independent, expert advice. That's why they're here. We are not technical experts in any way, shape or form. So if officers, and repeat, if we, technical officers are telling me that this solution will comply with our requirements, meet the legal, and better them, meet all the legal obligations and are a suitable solution, it is not our place at that time, well, no, they don't, unless we're prepared to say, well, the council, we don't accept that, we don't agree, and we're prepared to put the big checking costs that the appeal will absolutely ultimately require. Because we can't, as a panel, say to technical officers, you are wrong. That's not what we're here for. We're here to make a determination on the overarching planning matters. And the planning matter is, that is a fact. It's not an opinion, that is a fact. Now our job is to say, we accept that fact or we don't, and you can't have development on that side. I think it's problematic what I'm hearing. And if colleagues' opposition's view is, well, we're sticking to this line, that's all right, but then we've got to be prepared to pay the costs of the developer when we lose the appeal. And that's where we are.
Right, I've got councillor Carlisle and I've got councillor Khan. Members need to decide whether they still want to defer this, okay? So I'm going to bring councillor Carlisle and I'm going to bring councillor Khan.
Thank you. I think, Dalja, I'd be writing that down next time councillor Cohen doesn't agree with something that's in the officers' report there, and you can bring that up. I'll make very clear where I am, because I think I'm in a position that may be different than other members as well. I perfectly agree and trust those numbers that are written on that diagram. I am willing to accept a winter garden as a balcony, which I think is a move, because a balcony is outside, therefore is expected to more noise. I could question that this is actually indoors, but I will accept that as a move. What I want is that clarity that what we have been provided there in those numbers would not lead to a complaint. So I completely accept those numbers there. I completely accept the work that's been done. But what I haven't been given reassurance of is that those numbers would not lead to a complaint. Well, we've had it now. The difficulty has come after the recommendation's already been moved. Had I received that information beforehand, I don't know. But I would like to see it from the developer as well, how they would act on that. I mean, that's where I am, and that is some reassurance that I feel would be easy to provide me, and that's why I'm asking for it really, because I feel that a paragraph from the antisocial behaviour noise complaints team could give me that quite easily, and that reassurance. And I believe a snippet from the welcome pack provided could provide that quite easily. I don't think I'm particularly asking too much in this. I'm perfectly happy with how that has been developed as a noise mitigation scheme. I see how it works. I would just like to be confirmed, too, that that does mitigate the complaints against the charity, which are in fact the reason we're here. We're not here in this to make sure the noise levels get to a certain decibel. It's whether or not it has an impact on the business, is my concern. And that's not the tie-in that I've had, so.
Okay, can I, can I ask then councillor Carlisle, are you moving deferral on that basis?
I'll move deferral, to make it simpler, I'll move deferral on that basis alone and see if anyone wants to move a different proposal or if anyone wants to second that and take that to a vote.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was going to ask, does anyone want to second that deferral? Thank you, councillor. Right, so we need to take a vote on that deferral, on that basis only. So we are, it's on the complaint and the, I can see you're indicating, hang on. So we've got, right, we've got that on the table. It's been moved and seconded. I'm going to take councillor Khan and councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, what I said early on, what I said early on about the redesign of the winter garden. I know we proposed that before, and we never took a vote, that was on the table. We should have done that, actually. And we've just got another proposal now, and that's new to me. So for me personally, I will be happy to include, following from councillor Carlisle, that we need to have another look at the winter garden redesign as well.
On what basis, councillor Khan?
It comes back to the safeguarding again, for people to stand on the balcony and just looking down. That's on safeguarding wise. Can we stand on there, though? That's legally where do we stand on there?
On the safeguarding aspect, I think we're going to need to get further advice on the safeguarding, but I will bring a legal officer in.
So the safeguarding aspect, we've considered it in the inclusivity section of the report as a material planning consideration under the Equality Act 2010. And I think we've got to have, we've got that duty to have due regard. And we've had due... to have, we've got that duty to have due regard, and we've had due regard, and that's legally where the safeguarding aspect comes in.
Right, and you're still wanting to defer on that, you know, no? So we're back to looking at the complaint. Councillor Campbell, you wanted to.
Yeah, there are two elements to that, number one is, as I said initially in relation to that, this is relatively easy to deal with. Does it actually need to be deferred, or does it actually need, in effect, them to produce that with Chair and officers to make that decision? It strikes me as a very difficult and a very tenuous reason for deferral, to effectively ask for a copy of something that we're going to get, so the agreement we've got, it says that the agreement, the tenants' agreement will, has, effectively has to be agreed by us. So that, you know, we can make that, if you like, you make that a pre-occupation condition.
Yeah, the welcome pack has to be agreed by the council, yes, that's in condition four, I believe, yeah.
So if that's a pre-occupation condition, that should mitigate against it, because the officers can see it, and undoubtedly, we could circulate it to you. And the other element, okay, can you just say for my benefit exactly what you want, so I understand what I'm voting for?
I seconded it. Oh, didn't you? Oh no, he seconded it.
No, there were.
I've lost the plot.
So yes, there is a comment in there about the welcome pack being seen, I don't think it details necessarily what the welcome pack being seen is there to do, and I would like reassurance, I know you say we see it, at the moment, only officers would see that and make a decision, and I'm not entirely convinced that the wording in that condition allows us to be very critical about that welcome pack, and ensure that it does what I would like it to do, which is make sure that complaints from these apartments could not be made against the events. And the second part is in terms of our antisocial noise team, that were a complaint received from one of these apartments, either A, because they weren't shutting the doors of the winter garden, or B, because they're in their winter garden at 2am, that it would not be upheld, that these numbers that we've been showing here match exactly what, match within what we would say is acceptable levels by our antisocial noise complaints team.
Councillor Campbell, can you just repeat that?
Sorry, what extra information do you need that we haven't already been given? And, you know, I need to understand.
Well, some information was given after I didn't vote for the recommendation, so unlikely was the position we were in before that. Unlikely, I feel like I'm suddenly stuck and I'm being pressured on one side or the other here, so I think unlikely was the position I was in, unfortunately, had I been told that there was no chance of us upholding a complaint in there either because of incorrect use of the winter garden as noise mitigation, or because of use of the winter garden at a time that an event is on, and I was told that that definitely wouldn't be upheld, then I would have been swayed towards the recommendation. Yes, there is a point there around the welcome pack being submitted, I would prefer, at least if the Chair saw that and signed it off, so we know that was in that meeting, I'm perfectly happy for that. If somebody can give me adequate reassurance of those two points, then I would move to voting for the recommendation that's on the page. Now, as we had put that recommendation through to a vote, I didn't necessarily want to continue us here trying to debate on that reassurance, but.
Yeah, are you, this is getting so complicated, are you withdrawing your motion to defer councillor Carlisle?
Well, given that one, the recommendation has been defeated so far, I don't know where we are in a legal position.
Sorry, pending an alternative motion, which you just alluded.
Yeah, and I have proposed an alternative motion, I personally would like to see this come back with further details of the points I've raised, if, if it, yeah, that's where I am. I'd rather us not spend another hour here going round, I would rather receive it on a bit of paper myself personally, but I appreciate that all members are in different places, I'm not sure we've had many applications where we've been so different in our reasoning for different proposals.
So, okay, I was just going to move to the vote when you came in and sort of recommended a possible alternative. So I was going to take the vote on the defer, as you originally said, and councillor Dai had seconded. Is there an alternative before I do that? Are we, are you, no, right, we're just going with that defer, right, that councillor Carlisle proposed, and councillor Dai seconded. Can I see a show of hands in favour of that motion? And against?
Oh Chair.
Three. Thank you members. Right, I am going to, I am going to vote with councillor Carlisle, I am going to ask that we see that complaint procedure, we could, you want that to come back to panel councillor Carlisle with that answer? Right.
And the council's welcome pack.
Which we have to sign off anyway, as a council, right. So you want that to come back here with the assurance about the complaint and the welcome pack? Okay. Yes councillor Cohen?
So, is it going to be the standing policy of this committee, that we ask to see documentation for tenants on future listed, because I'll tell you what, our packs are going to get very complicated. This would be, in any application, a matter for officers, I've never in all my days heard that we're going to be bringing, no, I know, well, the Chair's, I find it bizarre.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be standing policy that we do that, no, it's not going to be standard policy that we do that, I think this is a unique situation where we've got a mitigation here that we've not had before at panel, and we want reassurances around the complaints procedure, and that welcome pack involves that complaints procedure, which is why we've said that. So that welcome pack should set out the complaints procedure, and that's the basis of the motion, is that we want to understand that complaint procedure and how it would be handled, and that's the only reason, it will not be standard procedure that that will come to panel, to be signed off. Right, I'm going to ask Dalja to sum up, thank you.
Thank you Chair, so the item has been deferred, and the reason for the deferral is that officers will bring back details of the welcome pack, and bring back details of how complaints, potential noise complaints will be dealt with in this particular case.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you everyone for their attendance today, I appreciate it's been a long meeting, and we've discussed a lot of different aspects to this application. So the date and time of the next meeting is Thursday the 10th of October at 1.30pm. Thank you members, if you would like to vacate the building, thank you.